Folks, before we start the meeting this evening, we're going to have a couple of videos that our Communication Department has put together. And they're going to start those here momentarily.
of it coming down. This one here is an intro to the Veterans Memorial event that's coming up on Memorial
All right. Thank you, Jordan. All right. We'll wait for the green light. There we go. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 6, 2015 Meeting of the Edina City Council, and it's on a Wednesday night, which is unusual, and we'll talk about that momentarily. Roll call, please.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Staunton?
Here.
Member Stewart?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. The reason, of course, we are meeting Wednesday, May 6, is because yesterday, the School Board had a referendum on some increased funding for the school district, and it passed 57-43. So congratulations to the school district and all you taxpayers, ourselves included up here. We've got a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. I think Manager Neil, you wanted to pull one of the items under four?
Yes, Your Honor. We would ask that the council remove item 4C from not only the consent agenda, but the agenda for tonight. We'll do some more work on that, and we'll bring it back to the council at a later date.
All right. Thank you. With the removal of 4C, is there a motion to approve the amended meeting agenda?
So moved. I'd like to remove...
Oh, sorry. This is just for consent, not yet?
For the agenda.
Consent, okay. This is just to amend the meeting agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? Member Stewart? Discussion, all those who are in favor of approving the meeting agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And then the consent agenda. Member Stewart, you wanted to pull 4G and H, I believe.
That's right.
Anyone else?
I'll move the balance of the consent agenda, A, B, D, E, F, and I.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of G and H. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. Member Stewart, item 4G, which is continuing a matter for findings of fact, this is related to 7200 France Project.
Right. This has been a serial continuation, and I spoke the first time we continued that I was against doing that, and I'm going to be consistent in my votes, and I'll vote against this.
All right. And I take it your opinion is the same with respect to the one that follows that H?
Correct.
Okay.
Would you like separate motions, Mayor?
I would.
I'll move G.
Is there a second on G? Got a motion, a second on G. All those in favor of approving 4G, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay.
Nay.
Carried.
And I'll move H, the continuing findings of fact for denial.
Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, on 4H. Discussion, all those in favor of adopting 4H, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay.
Nay.
Carried. All right. We are now into the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. And the first proclamation this evening is relating to National Public Works Week, and that proclamation reads as follows: Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, they left out snowplowing; and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials; and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, I, James Hovland, Mayor of the City of Edina, hereby proclaim the week of May 17 through the 23rd, 2015, as National Public Works Week in the City of Edina, and call upon the citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to designate National Public Works Week as the week of May 17 through the 23rd, 2015. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And we have Director Brian Olson with us this evening. Mr. Olson, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for reading the proclamation and giving me the opportunity to highlight public works for a few minutes. National Public Works Week is a celebration of the tens and thousands of men and women in North America who provide and maintain the infrastructure and services collectively known as public works. This year, the National APWA, or American Public Works Association, is celebrating the theme "Community Begins Here." There would be no community without the quality of life public works provides. There would be no community to police and protect, no public to lead and/or represent. Public works allows the world as we know it to be. This year's theme, "Community Begins Here," speaks to the essential nature of public work services in support of everyday quality of life. Edina's Public Works Department lives the three guiding principles the city has adopted: integrity, quality, and service. In fact, quality and service are the backbone of our operation. We touch the lives of every resident every day with the water that they turn on, the toilets that they use, and the roads that they drive. We provide incredibly reliable service with the operation of our systems, but that's only accomplished because of the people that provide that service. They are incredible employees and are very good at what they do. Thank you for recognizing National Public Works Week, and with that, the Edina Public Works Department. We humbly serve to satisfy our customers, every Edina resident.
All right. Thanks, Director Olson. Member Brindle, did you have a comment?
I do have a comment. If you have a chance, or the next time you have a chance, to go to the Public Works Building at 74th and Metro Boulevard, along the hallway, you'll find, I don't know how many, are there 30 or some posters, of National Public Works Week posters over the years? And they're artistic, they're well-done, this is no exception. They're really fun to look at, so if you happen to be there, take a look. It's really pretty cool.
Thank you.
Good. And, Mr. Olson, the work that you have led over there at the Public Works Department has been exceptional. You've been here several years now. We were really fortunate to have you come as an employee and want to work at the City of Edina. We know how much you give to the community, and how you've made the operations at Public Works even more effective than they've been in years past, and it's a tremendous tribute to you and your team over there that we could recognize you this way, at least one small way, that we can acknowledge the fine work that you do, day in, day out, year in, year out.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next proclamation we have is involving National Police Week, going to be designated May 10 through the 16th, 2015. And Deputy Chief Jeff Alasky is here to receive this proclamation, and the proclamation reads as follows, involving National Police Week, 2015. Whereas the week of May 10 through the 16th, 2015, is National Police Week in the United States, and whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Edina Police Department; and whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries; and whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, almost 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty; and whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington, DC; and whereas 273 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Memorial this spring, including 126 officers killed in 2014, and 147 officers killed in the previous years; and whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial Fund's 27th Annual Candlelight Vigil on May 13, 2015; and whereas the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 10 through the 16th; and whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, in honor of all the fallen officers, and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. And now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Edina, Minnesota, hereby proclaims May 10 through the 16th, 2015, as National Police Week in the City of Edina, Minnesota, and calls upon the people of Edina to observe this week and honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep the residents of the City of Edina safe. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to adopt the National Police Week proclamation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. Deputy Chiefs, I've got this for you, and a few comments would be...
I do, too.
...to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then if you have some comments for the council and for our residents regarding what we're planning on the 15th.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager, I just want to say, from the amendment of the Edina Police Department, thank you very much for recognizing the hard work that your police officers do for the community, City of Edina. I've been fortunate enough to be a police officer here for a little over 20 years now, and I can't think of a better place, especially with all this stuff going on in the world today. Law enforcement is a profession that I don't know if I'd go into it again, but I'm glad where I'm at today. So thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next proclamation involves Monarch Butterfly Month, May 2015. Whereas the monarch butterfly has been the official butterfly of Minnesota since the year 2000, and whereas the monarch butterfly population is down from 350 million to 60 million butterflies, and whereas the monarch butterfly migrates from Mexico to Minnesota each year, and whereas monarch butterflies feed on nectar from flowers like coneflowers, black-eyed Susans, and blazing stars; and whereas monarch butterflies will only lay their eggs on milkweed plants; and whereas monarch butterfly larvae need mildewed plants for food; and whereas one monarch caterpillar needs 20 to 25 milkweed leaves to turn into a purpie; and whereas it takes one month to grow from an egg to a caterpillar to a monarch butterfly. And now, therefore, I, James B. Hovland, Mayor of the City of Edina, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2015, the time for Edina residents to plant milkweed seeds. Is there a motion to adopt this proclamation?
So moved.
Got a motion, a second, to adopt the Monarch Butterfly Month, May 2015, and encouraging residents to plant milkweed seeds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And there's a gentleman named Ward Johnson here to receive the proclamation. Ward, come on forward, and I'll hand this to you, and maybe you have a few comments with regard to Monarch Butterfly Month.
I have rations for you guys. Excellent. You can go get some.
Okay. Our milkweed seeds.
So, my name is Ward.
Is this under the $5 statutory minimum?
Yeah. Ward, would you go to a side podium?
You need to go to one of the podiums and stand facing us.
Please.
Use the microphone and face us, please. Give us your name and address, please.
Ward Johnson. I am at 6408 Indian Hills Road in Edina. I've been a resident here for 38 years, really proud of it, really pleased to be part of this community. It's a great spot to live, raised my family here, and so I'm trying to do something for the community. About a year ago, we decided, my wife and I decided, we'd watch the decline of the population of the monarch butterfly, declined by over 90% since 1992. And the real reason for that was the decline of the milkweed population of 90% since 1992. As, Jim, you gave most of my speech, actually, when you were up here, but monarchs do require, every monarch caterpillar requires milkweed leaves to consume in order to survive. So the fact of the matter is, no milkweed, no monarchs. So I've asked some young ladies back here to pass out milkweed seeds to all you. These are seeds that are live seeds, they're recently produced. I like to see them planted in a sunny place, a quarter to a half inch deep, keep them moist for two or three weeks. They're poor, they're very poor germinators, so you have to pay attention to how you're planting them, but it's a good thing to do, and I love it. Actually, as an aside, this weekend, Jerry's Foods, you all know of Jerry's Foods across the street over here, is doing a promotion for us. It's called, how do you say this? Savor our cupcakes, save our monarchs. So they're putting out six packs of cupcakes with a seed packet in it, and it's a perfect gift, a Mother's Day gift. We get a bit of the proceeds from that. It's a great event, they're doing it at all their stores, and I encourage you to participate. So I thank you, Jim Hovland, Ann Swenson, the person that knows how to do everything.
It's the first proclamation I've ever written. I enjoyed it. But the other thing that Ward is doing is he is a 501(c)(3) corporation, nonprofit, doing this, and he is mailing milkweed seeds all over the country, and I think this is really exciting. I happened to mail them to all my Christmas card people, so that was kind of fun. So there are a lot of ways that you can help Ward and the monarch butterflies, so...
We, so far, we started in May a year ago, and we've given out 400,000 of those seed packets in the past year. So it's a frenzy deal, it's how I keep myself so tense. It's kind of a joke. But, so the first 20,000 of these, my wife and I hand-filled at our kitchen table, we filled them, filled them up and passed them out, and for six months, it took the place of sex in our house.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next time you decide to pick up another cause, come on back. We like having you here. The next proclamation deals with Preservation Month, May 2015. Proclamation reads as follows: Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability; and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds; and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas explore Edina's hidden treasures is the theme for Preservation Month, 2015, sponsored by the Edina Heritage Preservation Board. Now, therefore, we, the Edina City Council, do proclaim May 2015 as Preservation Month, and call upon the people of Edina to join their fellow citizens in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Is there a motion to adopt the Preservation Month proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to adopt the Preservation Month proclamation. Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And Joyce Repia from our staff is here to accept the proclamation, and then we're going to move right into another presentation, Joyce, and you can handle that introduction on the Edina Heritage Award for 2015.
This is such a great segue for Preservation Month. The Edina Heritage Award is something we annually do, and the Heritage Preservation Board has a great time choosing who the recipient will be, and this year, we have chosen Savory's Gardens at 5300 Whiting Avenue. And up until last year, we really didn't even know Savory's existed. But Heritage Preservation Board member Jennifer Chris Johnson lives in the neighborhood, and she said, when we were choosing our summer tour, she said, "Oh, you have to visit Savory's Gardens. That is just a showplace." And once we did take our tour, and lo and behold, this, talk about a hidden treasure in our community, this truly is. And we were fortunate that Dorothea Marty, from our Channel 16 Agenda Edina Show, accompanied us on our tour, and she did a wonderful story that really highlighted everything that makes Savory Gardens so special. And so I'd like to play that story for you right now.
Oh, good. Thank you, Joyce.
The early landscape of Edina included many farms, and one established in 1947 is still going strong. Photojournalist Natalie Gage and I tagged along with the Heritage Preservation Board to visit one of the first nurseries in the city.
From the railroad tracks all the way to Valley View is all the...
Every year, the Edina Heritage Preservation Board tours some of the city's gems for a perspective that can't be fully appreciated reading a report or viewing photographs. In July, the board let us join them on a journey that began just off of Highway 62. Tucked back in the Normandale Park neighborhood is an oasis of lush, green plants. Savory's Gardens started out as a full nursery, growing an abundance of orchids for corsages and sale to local florists. Over the years, Savory's has narrowed their focus to hostas. What started out as five varieties has now grown to over 2,000, many hybridized on the premises.
But it even amazes me to think that there are that many varieties. Between my husband and son, they probably named a couple hundred varieties of them, and that's always fun, naming them.
And some of those names honor our city, such as the Edina Heritage and Edina Hornet. Senior Planner Joyce Repia, part of the city's Community Development Department, shares a bit of history on Edina's first three nurseries.
Savory's was one of them. And Arneson, where we now have Arneson Acres, was a tree farm, and then there was Haller Nursery, which is at the Perkins location, right across here from City Hall. And now Savory's is the only one remaining, and I think that really makes it very special.
While they don't do much advertising, Savory's draws customers from all over North America.
Actually, a lot of our customers become very good friends.
And for years, mail orders have come in from as far away as Japan. One such order was for Mr. Savory's famous Golden Tiara Hosta.
A number of years ago now, my son went over there, and they like to give you a gift. So they gave everyone in the group a Golden Tiara, and then the group kind of laughed because we'd sold it to him so many years ago.
Savory's Gardens is located at 5300 Whiting Avenue, or check them out online at www.savorysgardens.com.
Well done. So who do you have with you this evening, Joyce?
Well, we are so fortunate. We have Mrs. Savory, and her son Dennis, and Jennifer Chris Johnson with the Heritage Preservation Board here today.
All right. Well, I have the award here, I'll bring it down. Your presentation. You go up in front first for a photograph, and then we'll have you speak a little bit.
All right.
Congratulations. Again, congratulations, and welcome. A few comments from you or our all.
I feel completely honored and proud for something that we've loved to do so long and enjoyed the many changes in Edina. Every once in a while, I slip and still call it the Village of Edina, because we enjoyed it so much. But I remember when there were a lot of farms, we had acreage, and now, then all of a sudden, it started going into city lots, and then into smaller neighborhoods, and it seems like every neighborhood that I've known and gone to, everyone has loved each other. They've just been so friendly, and there's all the parks and whatnot. And through the years, you know, like I say, first we're a village, and now we're a very beautiful city. So we're just proud to be part of it, and hope that we have many more years to do it. And I hope everyone will enjoy coming to our gardens one day. We have an open house the end of May every year, and open the display gardens, and I have refreshments and fun. So, thank you again so very, very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Savory.
There are little pieces, there are little pieces of your gardens all over Edina, I want you to know, at least in the two houses that I have lived in, that I have come and bought your hostas, so they're lovely. So thank you for doing that.
I'm glad, and I hope you'll enjoy them. And we say, I should tell you the little story of how my husband became interested. He lived near Lake Harriet, and there was a vacant lot next door when he was little, and his mother loved to garden, and she'd garden. So she gave him a piece of Lancelfolia, probably a species from Japan, very common one, and he divided it and divided it and divided it, and he had it on both sides of a long driveway alongside their house. And when we were married, it was still there. And just a year ago, my daughter came from out of town and visited and said, "Let's go see who lives there." You know what? Lancelfolia was still there. So this is a great honor, and I hope we will see some of you, and you'll enjoy the hostas. Thank you so very, very much.
You will. Thank you.
Well, and I want to say thank you as well, because some of Savory's hostas were a gift to the City of Edina and are healthy and expanding at Arneson Park.
Yes, Erin. Yes, I'm good. We have most of, each time we have a new introduction, we enter to the park down there to enjoy.
Good. Thanks, Mrs. Savory.
Thank you again.
We're going to move on now to the public hearing portion of the agenda. We've got four public hearing matters in front of us this evening, and the first public hearing matter is the consideration of applications received for a cable communications franchise, and Manager Neil has this matter.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the pleasure of introducing Mr. Brian Grogan. Brian is an attorney with the Moss and Barnett Firm. He is a specialist in the field of cable television law and communications law. Brian has served as the longtime administrator and chief legal counsel to the Southwest Cable Commission. He has previously given this presentation to the Cable Commission, the Cable Commission that we are a member of, and also, probably by this time, given it to at least one other city in the commission? Correct. And he's got a presentation he'd like to give tonight on the proposal from Century Link, and also wishes then to answer any questions that the council might have. Mr. Grogan.
Mr. Grogan, welcome. Nice to see you again.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, again for the record, Brian Grogan with the Minneapolis Law Firm of Moss and Barnett. I'm a little thrown by the microphone, I feel like I should be in a nightclub with this or something, but I will adjust. I'm here tonight to talk about competitive franchising. When I was last before you, we were dealing with the question of whether or not to grant a transfer of the Comcast franchise. So to set the stage, about two years ago, this city council and the other five, or the other four member jurisdictions of the Southwest Commission, approved a new 10-year contract with Comcast. Last year Comcast sought to transfer that franchise, and this council approved that transfer. You've probably read in the last couple of weeks that that transfer was terminated by Comcast, so they will remain your cable operator under that contract. We've now been approached by Century Link, seeking a competitive franchise to compete head-to-head with Comcast for cable television video subscribers in the city. And this presentation tonight will describe to you the process that we have to follow to consider granting Century Link a franchise, and a little bit about one of the key issues that you're going to face, and you're not going to face the decision tonight, but in the weeks and months to come, the question of how much of the competitive franchise Century Link will provide to residents within the City of Edina. In other words, the build-out of that system and how it will compete with Comcast. So first, I wanted to begin by describing briefly what federal law provides. Basically, federal... So that's a standard we're held to as one of reasonableness when considering Century Link's application. This slide simply outlines that we have followed the state statutory procedure. We have published in the local newspaper as appropriate to let the world know that we're considering competitive applications. As of the closing date, April 30th, we received one competitive application. That was from Century Link. So the question now for the city will be to decide whether Century Link is legally, technically, financially qualified to own and operate a cable system. And assuming a positive recommendation on those issues, then a franchise will be brought forward for the city council's consideration, and that franchise will hopefully provide a level playing field between the two companies in the sense that the terms that we impose upon both Comcast and potentially Century Link will essentially be even and equal between the two operators. And to that end, we have a provision in the Comcast franchise that this council adopted two years ago that provides the following, that if we grant a more favorable franchise to Century Link, Comcast would have the option to essentially set their contract aside and step into the Century Link contract. It was a negotiated provision, and it was Comcast's way of making sure that this city did not grant an unfair preference to a competing operator. So that standard still applies to us as we look at what the terms will be of a potential Century Link franchise. On top of that local requirement, we have two other things to consider. We have state law. State law requires a level playing field as well, particularly on something known as the area served, meaning if a franchise is granted for the entire city of Edina, over what portion of that city will the build-out occur? And Minnesota statute goes on to define that for initial franchises, so Comcast was a renewal franchise, Century Link will be an initial franchise. And for an initial franchise, construction throughout that franchise area is supposed to be substantially completed within five years. Now, that statute would seem clear on its face, but of course, I wouldn't be presenting it if it were crystal clear, if there weren't an issue that we would have to face, and that is, we have a federal law that seems to call into question whether or not that state statute will apply to a competitive franchise. This federal law is generally referred to as a 621 order in reference to a statute at the federal level. And it concluded that it's unlawful for a city to refuse to grant a competitive franchise on the basis of unreasonable build-out mandates. Now, let me step back for a moment because I can sense a little confusion here. The question's going to be, will Century Link provide competitive service to every house in Edina, or to some of the houses in Edina, or a small portion of the houses in Edina? And that'll be a decision that'll be presented to this council, not tonight, but in subsequent meetings for your consideration. Tonight, what I'm trying to do is describe to you these laws. You're going to hear a little bit more about that as Century Link presents to you this evening, so that it's not a case of first impression when we come back before you and hopefully present a negotiated franchise for your consideration. I'm not going to go through this slide in detail, except that I wanted to provide for you a listing of what the FCC considers to be reasonable and unreasonable build-out mandates, so that's in your packet for your review. So the question that we will have to decide is whether state law is applicable or whether there is a potential preemption under federal law. Again, we're not going to answer that question tonight, but I want to end my presentation with this comment, that this is known in Minnesota as a quasi-judicial decision. So when you're granting a cable franchise as elected officials, it's quasi-judicial. And what that means is, before you render an opinion or a decision about this issue, the concept would be you listen to the views of both the opposing and the proponent parties, those in favor and those against this issue, weigh all of that evidence, and then make a decision with supporting findings of fact for that decision. So tonight, you have a public hearing. You're going to hear comments from Century Link, certainly in favor of their application, may or may not be comments on the other side of the equation. I do want to emphasize that Comcast has submitted a letter to the city indicating their position that state law is applicable, and that they would expect that the city of Edina will hold Century Link to the state law mandates, particularly with respect to build-out. Again, we won't answer that question tonight as a city, but that will be in a subsequent meeting. The Cable Commission will ultimately provide a recommendation for your consideration, and then the issue will be presented to you and briefed in advance by your staff. And so with that, I'll pause for any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Grogan at this point in time? Anyone? I had one. With respect to the standard of reasonableness, what are the elements that are considered in, using, utilization of that standard?
Well, essentially, there's, it's, I would answer that question by saying there's two phases we're going to go through. The first will be whether the company possesses the requisite legal, technical, financial qualifications. And the standard, again, will be that the city shall not unreasonably refuse to award a competitive franchise. So again, reasonableness, obviously, that is somewhat of a subjective standard, but there will have to be evidence supporting the fact that the company has the financial wherewithal to operate the system, that they filed the proper documentation through the Secretary of State in order to do business in the state as the legal entity that's applying for the franchise, and that they have the technical qualifications to provide video service through a wired system. Currently, they're partnering with a satellite company to provide this in a wireless manner. We are doing a background due diligence at the commission level, and we'll have a report prepared that will support the city's ultimate consideration of that issue. The second issue will be a reasonableness standard with respect to the award of the franchise itself, and that will be one that will be based in part on the laws that I just described for you.
All right. Thank you. That prompt anything for the council, for Mr. Grogan? Member Stewart?
Real quick, you said that each of the sides had a position on whether or not a state law applied here in the city. In your professional opinion, do you believe that this state law does apply to the city?
In part, council member, it's the absolute right question to ask, but in part because it's a quasi-judicial decision that you're going to be rendering, it's somewhat inappropriate for us to prejudge the issue, and rather, I think the appropriate process will be for both parties to submit all evidence that they wish, and that for the record to be complete, and after that record's complete, for then you to be able to render a decision. Certainly, I expect staff will be prepared to provide you with some guidance on that, but at this point, it'd be premature to respond. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Anyone else? Thanks, Mr. Grogan.
Thank you.
You'll be standing by, I'm sure. So what the council's been asked to do tonight in terms of this process, and this is the front end of a process, is to conduct a public hearing, and then we will take this up for consideration at a subsequent date. So I'm going to open this matter up for public testimony at this point in time. If you were here at the beginning of the meeting, you heard Mr. Grogan box say that you'll have three minutes to make a presentation. You'll get a green light, and then when you've got 30 seconds left, you'll get a yellow light, and then you should wrap up your comments or think about wrapping up your comments. So now open for public testimony. Anyone who wants to testify regarding this matter, please come forward.
Sir, may I just want to clarify that the applicant itself is not held to the three-minute standard. They were looking at me questioning because they may have a slightly longer presentation for the council.
All right. Let's, why don't we have the applicant come forward and make their presentation? Might make it easier for folks to come after the presentation.
It's not terribly longer. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Tyler Middleton. I'm Century Link's Vice President of Operations for Minnesota. I reside at our company location in Minneapolis, which I've been at a lot these days. My objective today is to share with you some of the highlights of Century Link's technical and operational capabilities to provide video service under the franchise application process that Mr. Grogan just outlined. My colleague Patrick Haggerty will speak very briefly to some of the legal positions that we have in that regard. Comcast and its predecessors have enjoyed a monopoly on wireline service in this area for well over 30 years. And today, Century Link comes prepared to provide choice to your residents and competition to this market. Century Link currently offers a television service called Prism TV in 14 select markets across the country, including some larger markets such as Phoenix, Las Vegas, and Denver, and closer to home here in the Midwest. It's available in La Crosse, Wisconsin, and Omaha, Nebraska. We currently pass 2.3 million households and have over 250,000 customers. Prism is an IPTV service which operates over Century Link's high-speed internet network. It provides a very high-quality digital picture and offers packages that have as many as 310 channels. Of those 210 channels are HD, which is significantly more than those currently offered by cable. Other features are included a wireless set-top box, so for example, you could take your television from your living room to your garage, and then out to your deck to watch tomorrow night's Wild game if it's not raining. It also offers a whole-home DVR service that records four channels simultaneously, and also allows you to start watching the television in one room and conclude watching the program in another. Navigation is easy through a menuing system, and we have something called Warp Channel Change, which allows you to very, for those of you who are surfers, allows you to very quickly change the channels without any latency or delay. How do we deliver this service, and this goes to the build-out that Mr. Grogan spoke to? The video content travels over Century Link's managed two-way internet protocol network and arrives at the customer's home either through the 1 gigabit fiber-to-the-home network that's currently under construction in the Twin Cities, and that's, 1 gigabit is 1,000 megabits per second, or over our existing network that we have to most homes in the area. It's a combination of fiber and copper services that's in place today. It takes many tens of millions of dollars to bring this service to this market, just to start. And with $18 billion in revenue, Century Link being the third-largest telecommunications provider in the country, we believe we have the financial wherewithal, the resources, and the expertise to support an endeavor as large as bringing this to market. As you know, Century Link provides traditional voice and internet services to residential customers in 37 states, as well as to the country's largest business customers nationally and internationally through voice, data, managed services, and cloud computing solutions. If you're closer to home in Minnesota, we employ nearly 3,000 people, the majority of those employees being here in the Twin Cities area, and more than half of those employees are represented by the Communication Workers of America Union. This includes 500 network technicians, many of which are already trained on the underlying infrastructure that supports this product, and who are currently being cross-trained to support the Prism television product itself. We are also in the process of hiring more technicians as we speak. Century Link also employs approximately 100 network engineers in the Twin Cities who work in partnership with the operations team to plan, build, and deploy the service. So as you know from our application, bringing Century Link's Prism to this market is a very significant investment in the infrastructure of your area, your city, and the Century Link employees are ready to deliver the state-of-the-art television product to this market shortly. In fact, we are almost ready. In select areas where the video franchises are in place, we are prepared to start offering the Prism service as soon as next month. So I look forward to bringing choice and competition to your constituents, and I'm going to turn it over the microphone quickly to Patrick Haggerty, who is our Director of Legislative and Regulatory Affairs.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Middleton.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening again. Patrick Haggerty, I have Regulatory and Government Affairs for Century Link. I'm here speaking on behalf of Century Link. Mr. Middleton did an effective job of sharing our technical and operational, financial capabilities and qualifications in terms of this application. I wanted to present briefly a little information around the legal. Mr. Grogan has done a fine job of somewhat outlining what you will be considering in terms of down the road looking at the application. In 1992, the FCC sought, and Congress sought to compel competition in the video market. They initially took the action of prohibiting exclusive franchising in local marketplaces. We have a law here in Minnesota that's unique, in a sense, primarily or particularly regarding two elements. It compels or requires you as local franchising authorities to mandate on any second entrant into the marketplace the same obligations as the initial incumbent monopoly provider had, one being the level playing field mandate, the second being the build-out requirement within five years. We are, and submit confidently, that the FCC's actions that took place in 2007 with the 621 order absolutely, absolutely preempt our state law, particularly, again, in those two areas. The FCC and their findings are sought out in the mid-2000s to determine why competition wasn't flourishing in the marketplace. Congress took action previously to do that and compel that, and there just wasn't evidence that was occurring. So they sought out comment to find out why that was. And two of the things that they found in, or found in their findings were the fact that, one, the mandate to create a level playing field was absolutely an unreasonable impediment to competition. Two, not only did they find that with the build-out, but they found that a build-out requirement issued by an LFA, if a second entrant was unable to or unwilling to agree to that, was an absolute unreasonable reason to decline a franchise approval from that second entrant. So in both of those cases, Minnesota law contradicts what the FCC sought out to do. The FCC does and has laid out what they do believe a reasonable build commitment may look like, and one of those models is described or reflects what we're proposing, and that is the opportunity to come in under an initial build requirement that allows us to make the investment in that initial build. And at some point in the anniversary of the franchise itself, there's a point in time you look at and you review what success we've had in the marketplace in terms of penetration, subscriber penetration, and if, in fact, we've had some level of success to be determined within the language of the franchise, it would then trigger or compel us, require us, obligate us to build an additional, make an additional investment and build an additional percentage of households, if that's how it ends up being referred. So that is the model we present to you. It is a model that is supported by the FCC in terms of what they believed a reasonable build-out requirement for a second entrant would look like. We, again, believe we have fulfilled both, all three of the financial, technical, and legal elements of the application before you. And in closing, I thank you for your time, your consideration, and Tyler and I would both stand for questions.
Questions for Mr. Haggerty, and Member Swenson?
So currently, do you have any area, any Edina that would be ready for Prism now, today?
Mayor, Councilmember Swenson, we do. We've got a build-out plan in that if and when the franchise were approved, we'd have the opportunity to enable houses within Edina very quickly.
Very quickly, meaning they could sign up and if they could be on your schedule for the next day, you could do it? Or very quickly in that you still need to put in a 1G system to within their house?
I probably, I believe you said...
I'm not asking for where.
Yeah.
I'm just asking for within Edina, because that is always going to be the question our residents want to know.
One of the benefits to what we're doing is that we are leveraging our existing infrastructure. So there literally is fiber and copper assets in place, in the ground today, that when a franchise is put in place, if they meet certain technical minimum requirements, we can turn on the service as soon as we have a franchise in place.
So does Prism work on less than 1G?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
The general, and this is a little bit of an oversimplification because there's some fine tuning and some things we have to do to the network to allow it to carry a video signal, but the general premise is, if a household is capable of receiving 25 megabits per second from us, they'll be able to carry the Prism service.
Okay. Is there any area, any Edina today that will be ready, that is ready to receive 1G in speed for internet?
We are, we are in the process of building that out. I actually can't speak if we've got, I'm not sure if we have gigabit here or not.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Middleton or Mr. Haggerty? Member Stewart, and Member Brindle.
What Minnesota communities do you currently serve?
In terms of Prism service?
Yes.
None. We are, we are currently in discussions with virtually every city and every cable commission in the Twin Cities metropolitan area to bring a cable franchise in place so we can deliver the service.
And all of them are wrestling with this issue of whether...
Member Stewart and Member Brendel.
What Minnesota communities do you currently serve?
In terms of Prism service?
Yes.
None. We are, we are currently in discussions with virtually every city and every cable commission in the Twin Cities metropolitan area to bring a cable franchise in place so we can deliver the service.
And all of them are wrestling with this issue of whether or not state law is preempted by federal law?
It certainly is on the minds of everybody. The City of Minneapolis approved the franchise that we had negotiated with them at a Ways and Means Committee level a week ago Monday, and is up for final consideration at their full city council meeting on May 15th.
What are the characteristics of our residents whom you would refuse service to?
Do you want to take that?
I'll take a run at it.
To refuse service to? It's not really a question of refusing service. It's, again, we're trying to-
Who would you be unable to serve?
Pardon me?
Who would you be unable to serve?
Well, again, we're looking, part of what we're trying to do is we need to make a very substantial investment to get the service even into this general marketplace. And our approach is that we want to leverage the existing assets we already have in place today. So it's really a question of where do we have the assets already in place that already are capable of delivering 25 megabits per second or greater?
It sounds like from your answer to Member Swenson's question, you don't have any assets in place capable of doing that?
We have, we do. We have any of our customers that are throughout the Edina area that can receive 25 megabits per second or greater would be those that would be eligible for this service once we've done the final, what's called grooming of the network so it can accept the video signal.
Right. But you need to put in the infrastructure to create that 25 megabits per second?
No, sir. The infrastructure is already in place today.
So which parts of Edina have it and which parts will not have it?
Well, what we've, what we've done, and we've already done with staff, in fact, is we are, we are more than willing to show the maps of where those different speeds are and where we are doing other things to upgrade the network. And that's, those maps are actually the most competitively sensitive piece of information we have, because if our competitor were able to get a hold of them, they would be very targeted in their efforts to stop us. So what we've done is we provide those maps to your staff, and we've shown them already where we're building and where we'll be enabled.
In your honor, I can verify that I have seen those maps for the City of Edina, and so they, they exist, and there are areas I can verify on their maps that they could serve.
Can you estimate what percentage of our citizens are covered?
Does that break my-
Rather not at this time-
Okay.
Say that.
Are there those documents that you could list?
There are not.
If they are, I don't know the purpose.
That's correct.
Which is why we've seen them-
Which is why they are not, I think.
We saw them at a cable meeting, but we did not, we're not allowed to take them home.
Mr. Grogan, were you going to comment?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, the maps that are available, and I've seen maps now for nearly 25 cities in the metro area, CenturyLink has been willing to make those available in a non-public setting. If there's any council members, any other members of the staff that need to see those, arrangements can be made. What they have requested is that the city not make them available publicly, and so far, to the best of my knowledge, cities have honored that request, that they are essentially a confidential or trade-secret document. And so they are not in the possession of any employees, including myself, but they can be brought to the city and made available for review, which I think will help to clarify some of the questions that are being asked. So arrangements can be made through Manager Neal's office to have that occur.
Thank you, Mr. Grogan. Member Stewart, do you want to continue?
Thank you.
Member Brendel.
I like concrete answers, because it's very difficult to figure out what the answer really is when it's floating around. And that's kind of, kind of what I'm getting, and, and I understand that, that there are, there are things that you don't want to divulge, but let's say, for example, that I order Prism. How long is it before I get it on my television?
Well, what we're doing is, as we enable the various households through the two different techniques we've talked about, the new build and existing, they will be put into our systems, and any customer can go into our website and say, "Am I eligible for Prism service?" And it'll either tell you you are or you aren't. If you aren't-
Okay. So, so if there's copper and fiber already there?
Mm-hmm.
What makes me ineligible for Prism?
If the speeds are less than 25 megabits per second.
Ah, okay. So if, if I'm in an area where the speed is less than 25 megabits, then either I'm delayed or I'm not going to get it?
That's correct.
And will I know that I'm not going to get it versus I will get it someday?
Well, when we, what we're doing is, when, when people go into the site and they ask if they're eligible, if it says no, we collect that data, we take that into consideration as we're continuing the forward-looking expenses to build out the network further. So part of this is, you know, we haven't stated this, but we're coming into this with literally zero customers. So we're trying to enable as many households as we can, that's our goal, within the cost confines that we have, and then as we're successful, and as, and as Mr. Haggerty mentioned, we put language into the franchise that says, it's basically success-based modeling, that as we continue the success, we require to build out further and further and enable more and more homes. Clearly, our goal is to enable as many households as possible, that's in all of our best interests, but there's simply not enough capital to do it all at once, and certainly not across the entire Twin Cities right out of the gate.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Middleton or Mr. Haggerty? I've got one for either one of you. So tell us what your build-out intentions are with respect to the City of Edina regardless which legal standard applies.
Mayor, Councilmembers, could you repeat the question?
I'm asking you on the new build, what are your intentions on build-out, timing of build-out, regardless of which legal standard applies? How soon do you intend to build out a system in Edina regardless of which legal standard applies?
To 100% of the homes? Is that the question, Mayor? I'm sorry.
To be competitive with Comcast. I don't know if 100% of the homes are not. I doubt it.
Mayor, Councilmembers, we're currently in the midst, or we're currently in the process of building. In terms of long-term, long-term, what we're proposing is that, that be predicated on the success we have in the market of acquiring customers.
And how would you define that?
Having customers that currently-
How many customers do you need to bring online to cause you to go to the next phase, and the next phase, and the next phase, and what's, if everything goes well, what's the total projected build-out time for Edina?
Well, the, the number, in terms of the penetration rate, the number, percentage of subscribers that would come to us is something that's discussed within the language of the franchise itself. I can share that in other franchises, and predicated on our business case and our business modeling, it's around 27%.
27%? Over what period of time?
Penetration in general, and again, period of time in terms of when we review whether or not we've accomplished that. Again, part of the discussion within the franchise itself. To give an example of other franchises, Minneapolis, for example, the initial build-out is two years, and the review of how successful and to what degree we built out within that first two-year period is done quarterly.
All right. Does that meet your concrete answer standards?
Well, there's some concrete in there.
There's some, some helpful information.
If I can, if I can be more clear, please-
This is something that we worked through with the negotiation process.
All right.
Okay.
But yeah, please, if I can be more clear, ask. I'm not attempting to be unclear.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine for now.
Jim, may I have a follow-up? So if you're, if the state law applied, you'd be required to build out the entire city in five years. It sounds like that's too fast for you guys to do that with the capital available. How long would it take? Would it take 10 years?
I think really the, the issue is that as the second entrant to this market, Comcast basically has 100% of the wire-line-based video customers today. We are betting on a business case that we're going to be successful. We don't know if we'll be successful. There are changes in the video market right now with over-the-top, as it's called, with the likes of Netflix and Hulu and, Hulu and Amazon Prime and others. There's also satellite competition. So it would be irresponsible of our shareholders to make a commitment across all the cities of the Twin Cities of Minneapolis and St. Paul without any guarantee of the revenues we might, and subscribers we might ultimately have. So it literally is a derivative of the, you know, we will commit to an initial number of households. We want to enable as many of them as we can, but then ultimately, it's, the answer to that is how successful we are in obtaining subscribers.
So you don't know?
We don't know. We have no idea of knowing. There's no way we can know.
In addition to offering cable, would you not offer computer linkage for internet connections?
It runs over our internet connections. So again, it's, it's our existing-
So irrespective of what happens, people need connectivity?
Yes. Yeah. Part of this, I mean, think of the, think of in this case, the, the video television product is an application that runs over our internet connections. It also is what will fuel additional investments in this area to take the speeds we have today and continue to increase those speeds so that not only can the Prism service work over those internet connections, but also those who just want internet for internet's sake can also get that as well. They are not mutually exclusive, they are complementary.
And do you have to lay fiber to make this happen?
No. Again, the, the existing infrastructure we have in place is a combination of, from our, or called our central offices, the fiber goes out to neighborhoods, goes to those big boxes that are on the corners, and from there, it goes over copper facilities to the homes. Prism service can work over those existing facilities if the given household can receive signals of 25 megabits or greater.
Okay.
What we're doing in addition to that is we have, we have declared that the Twin Cities metropolitan area is we're going to make it a one-gigabit city, which means we are starting to slowly but surely deploy fiber services all the way to the side of the home. That capability allows us to deliver speeds up to one gigabit or 1,000 megabits per second.
Thank you. I don't have anything more.
Thank you. Understanding the, the risks in the, in the business modeling, what's, what's your committed financial, what's your financial commitment to the, to the greater Minneapolis-St. Paul market?
The initial-
For the initial entree into various-
The initial investment that we have to spend without getting a single customer is about $125 million.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions for Mr. Middleton or Mr. Haggerty at this time?
No.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Stand by, and we may have some more questions for you when we finish. Now we're going to open it up for public testimony, and folks can come forward. I see one of our residents coming forward now, and the three-minute rule will apply to the testimony that's offered by our residents. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jim Groot. I live at 5513 Park Place. I'm here to speak in favor of granting this franchise. I currently deploy the competitor's product at the business class, and it's been very disappointing. Speeds have declined. Every year, our rates go up. Now, all of a sudden, we have to, you know, we have to rent a modem. I would urge you to approve this franchise at the earliest possible date. Perhaps CenturyLink could get in on the construction season this summer and take advantage of those, those parts of the city where we have road construction projects going underway. Perhaps that could be dovetailed. So again, I would urge you to, you know, grant this franchise at the earliest possible date, because we really need the competition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Did you give your address?
Yes, he did.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward? Seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing, discussion. Those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Mr. Middleton, Mr. Haggerty, thank you for coming this evening. We appreciate it. I hope we didn't cross-examine too hard. Mr. Grogan, as always, we thank you for coming and giving us some good guidance. We know that, that you will, when your time is appropriate, guide us through this whole qualification issue with respect to legal standards, technical standards, and financial standards, so we're looking forward to your assistance there. Anything further from the council?
No.
All right. We're going to move on to the next public hearing matter. The next public hearing matter before us this evening involves a matter that Director Teague has, which is a zoning ordinance amendment regarding lot division procedures. Director Teague?
Thank you.
(noise) Saw like a guy was just coming on stage at a rock concert.
Oh, that sounds like it's working. Okay. So before you is a zoning ordinance amendment that the Planning Commission has been working on over the past several months. It's a result of the work session that the council had with the Planning Commission back in February. So the goal of the ordinance here, four, four goals here to, we're addressing lot division procedures, rezoning procedures. That was the genesis of the, of the work session that we had to simplify the, the rezoning process. We're suggesting some simplifications to the side yard setback regulations and our R2 district regulations. What I thought I would do is just go through each section. There are 10 sections of the ordinance before you, and just summarize each of those, and then I can stand for any questions that you might have, and we can open the public hearing. So the first section deals with what we, what's defined in our ordinance as a lot division. That title itself is confusing, because a lot division isn't dividing property, it's simply shifting a lot line. So the ordinance before you is making that clarification, that it's not a lot division, it's an adjustment of an existing lot line, or a party wall division of an existing duplex, where there's an existing duplex and you're just creating a lot line down that party wall. Currently, our ordinance requires review by Planning Commission and City Council for these lot line adjustments, where I think we're unique in the Twin Cities in that most other cities do these administratively. So the ordinance before you makes that clarification on what a lot division is, really a lot line adjustment, and it, it's allowing staff to do those administratively. In doing that, we're not creating any new lots. You can't make one lot large enough to be eligible for further subdivision, and it doesn't, it can't create a, an unbuildable lot. So that's the first section.
Mr. Mayor, can I just suggest that maybe if there's questions with each of these sections, we jump in now rather than go back and do them over?
Sure.
So on this, the party wall, this, I assume this lot division would apply even if it wasn't a party wall, so to speak. This could be any existing two lots next to each other that are just trying to move the lot line one way or another.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The rules aren't changing, it's just allowing staff to administratively-
Right.
-approve those. We'd still create a resolution that gets filed at the county.
So the party, party wall is kind of a colloquial reference that, it's an example of one type, but there could be other situations. It's just moving the lot line around.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So the second section deals with window wells. You recall, this was placed in the ordinance a little over a year ago, and the intent was to allow a clear path from the front yard to the backyard, and we established that at three feet. And the issue that we were trying to address was having window wells built in the side yard lot lines. They were accepted from the ordinance previously. We were seeing window wells built right out to the lot line. We're also seeing retaining walls built to the lot line. So the current ordinance talks about egress window wells only. So what the, the ordinance before you is, it's created a definition of window well, and it takes into account all types of window wells, whether it's an egress window or just your general window well itself. So the regulation isn't changing, it's still a three-foot setback required, at least on one side. Any questions on, on that?
So it says in the, in the text, it says, "Structure located immediately below a window." I assume, you know, I'm understanding window wells, it's generally around it. Would it have to be below it? Could be adjacent to it, or above it, or around it?
Yeah. If the sill- Yeah, if the sill, it's typically going to be below.
But part of the window well will also be-
If it were above, you wouldn't need to dig out the, if the sill itself is above grade, you wouldn't need to-
So the top sill?
Right.
The bottom sill?
It's the bottom sill.
Because the bottom-
No, it's the top sill.
Because the bottom sill is- Right.
Right, so the window well would have to-
I think-
Start somewhere along the side. It could start at the top.
Somewhere below grade.
And the window may or may not extend above grade.
Right.
So I just, and I think we can maybe park that, but I just wonder about that word below, just for clarity. Thank you.
All right. Is there a maximum vertical depth of a window well?
No, not in the zoning ordinance. That would be addressed especially as far as an egress window, the depth. The zoning ordinance doesn't address that.
Okay, because that's what I'm looking for from a safety standpoint. Because if a dog or a child were to fall into, or other animal, were to fall into a window well, they may not be able to get out. And I would see that as a safety issue. So, you know, not that, not that you would necessarily limit the depth of it, but it would have to be made in a manner that it could be climbed out of. So that's, it's been brought up to me by two people in the past couple of days. And so I thought I would, I would bring that out as a safety issue.
Any other questions on the window wells? Okay.
Back to Member Staunton's concern about the use of the word below. It strikes me that when you see the egress windows, that the space is really adjacent to the window. It's in the, it's in the foundation, it's built into the foundation of the house. It's not below. The window well isn't below the window. It's adjacent to the window.
I think that's a good word. I'd be comfortable with adjacent.
In fact, I think you have to say adjacent to if you strike the word below.
Would you then identify, would you say then the window well is no deeper below grade than the window itself? That it can't extend below the window?
I think they do. I think they do for drainage purposes.
If that's something that you're interested in, I would recommend that we send that back separately to the planning commission to discuss and then bring back to you at a further time.
I'm just wondering if that's the intent of the question, if that's what you're asking.
No.
No, it's not.
No, it isn't.
I mean, I didn't mean to get into crafting at this point. I just wanted to kind of raise the questions. But certainly if there's a, if there's a wordsmithing task, we could certainly do it between readings, too, if we kind of express the concern and then let staff bring back the better phrases.
Okay.
Okay. So Member Brindles made her safety point. We've got some other issues there with respect to window sills or windows wells. Any other comment on window well, or does move on to the next proposed change, section three? As Member Staunton points out, we're on first reading here, so it's coming back again. Go ahead.
Okay, so this next section is in regard to plan modifications. This is after a council approval, when an applicant makes changes to the plans. It's whether they come back to the planning commission or city council for review. The planning commission is suggesting some additional language that includes addressing impervious surface changes, no more than a 5% increase. On-site circulation access changes can't be changed from the approval. And landscape plant changes, can't decrease the number of trees. You may need to shift some around, but no decrease in the numbers. And so that ties in a little bit to the PUD regulations that we'll discuss here in a minute. But if you have any questions on this section?
All right. I think you can go to the next section.
Okay, so sections four and five is in regard to the procedures for rezoning. Currently, as you know, there's a two-step process for all rezoning, so that entails four public hearings. The proposed ordinance creates a one-step process for standard rezoning requests. So they would typically, this doesn't impact sketch plans. So typically a rezoning, they'll come in with a sketch plan that's reviewed by planning commission and council. So then, once they're ready for a formal application, it's just a one-step process. So it's public hearing at planning commission and public hearing at city council, and that's a final, final decision. The, the second piece of this is in regard to PUD rezonings. And that's still a two-step process, but that second step changes. So they typically come in for sketch plan review, review by planning commission and council. The first step then is the preliminary rezoning of the PUD. And that's reviewed and a public hearing held at planning commission and city council. The second step, if it's approved, only goes back to the city council. And that's essentially a check-in to make sure that they've met all the conditions. You may have added conditions, and the plans may have been revised to reflect your, your conditions. So any questions on the, and this, this is consistent with what we talked about at the, at the work session in February.
Questions on the procedures for rezoning, sections four and five? Consistent, I think, as you say, with what we had discussed in a work session. All right, section six and seven?
Okay, and this is in regard to side yard setback regulations, and window wells tie into this somewhat. But this is adding clarity to the side yard setback requirements. Right now, you have a choice. I'll do my best to explain here. You have, we've, when we made these changes back about a year ago, you have a choice. You can increase your setback by, let's just take for example, a one foot on each side on a 50-foot wide lot. You could build straight up, if you had a six-foot setback on one side and six foot on the other. Or you could build to the old standard, which is five feet on each side. But on the second story, you have to increase your setback six inches for every foot that that single-family home exceeds 15 feet in height. And the measurement of that is taken from the, the proposed grade, as opposed to where we measure the height of a house, is taken from the existing grade in the front. So having those two options is causing a lot of confusion. In general, we're seeing, most of the new homes that are being built are choosing the new option, which is to increase the setback on the ground and then build straight up. Sometimes they're doing some articulation on the second, second level. But the intent of the ordinance here is to eliminate that six inches for every foot that the second story has to be setback.
Member Swenson?
So then are you telling me that you've gone to a standard six-yard setback, so they can just build straight up? And there is no five-yard setback anymore?
That's correct.
Okay, so if the five-yard setback is gone, you can't do five yards and then step it back?
Yes, yep.
And that's just because there's some confusion with how it's measured and doing that? Because I see a number of houses that have chosen to be straight on one side and do six feet and five feet and step back on the other based on where their garage is, et cetera.
Yeah, there's some are still-
So you're taking away that option now, correct? And it's just six feet, six feet?
Yes.
Can there be a five feet, seven feet?
I might look to Chris here, who is our assistant planner, who reviews these on a daily basis. So if you feel the need to jump in, please help.
Can-
I know what we're typically seeing, sure.
In answer to your question, on lots that are between 50 and 60 feet in width-
Right.
There's two choices. You have a 12-foot total with your minimum of five on one side, seven on the other, or six and six. Or it's five feet plus six inches for each foot average. The wall height exceeds 15 feet. Carrie's right. I'd say now more often builders are opting to do, choosing the six and six and going straight up, or the five and seven and going straight up unless they're building for a homeowner. A lot of homeowners that are building specifically, it's not a spec home. They'll want to have as much width on the first floor. And so then they'll opt for the five and five, and then they'll, they'll jog it back in. Now we have those side yard articulation rules in place that do require, sidewalks are not just blank, straight-up sidewalks. There's an articulation piece that is in place now. So that really does address a lot of the concerns if you have the straight up, you're not going to get the flat, unarticulated sidewalks, even if you're going straight up with the new rules.
Part of what we did when we did the side yard setbacks was to try to give more space between the homes. Now, some of that is on the first floor, but when we made them step back on the second floor, that was to add additional space up higher. So in my understanding, if they choose for their 12 feet under this new law, five and seven, that other than the articulation rule, they can now build straight up on the five-foot side and not have to step it back?
Yes, that's correct. On one side. On the other side, they're, they have to be seven feet, so they're further.
No, I get that. But at seven feet, they didn't have to step it back. They could take it straight up.
Correct.
At six feet, they can take it straight up today, but at five feet, they can't. But this would change the five-feet side, five-foot side, this rule.
Well, you have your choice. You can go straight up with five and seven. Or you can be five and five, and then you'd have to do the six inches for each foot average.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So if you are, if you have a total of 12 feet, and it can't be less than five, so it's five and seven? Correct. You can go straight up? Correct. But if they choose five and five, then they have to come in? Currently. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Currently.
No, under the new law.
That is, that is what- What is currently in place, we're trying to eliminate that piece from the ordinance.
Right.
The going-
So you wouldn't have the choice?
You no longer have the choice. It would just be strictly the six and six or the five and seven, and you could go straight up. Oh, I misunderstood. I thought you said, okay, all right. So it's 12. It's not 10 going forward.
Correct.
Correct. With this? Yes. Okay, thank you.
And regardless which combination you choose, you can go straight up, is what they're proposing?
Correct.
So what are, what are the potential negatives of that on a 50-foot lot?
Goes deeper into the lot.
It would perhaps go deeper into the lot. It's less confusing. It becomes really confusing after you go between 60 and 75 feet in width because you're adding an additional four inches to your side yard setback if you're doing the five and five and the height. So the measurement for a lot width is measured 50 feet back. So there's all of these interpretation issues when you're looking at that piece. So it does become much more difficult for anybody designing it or trying to understand the ordinance.
So for me, I'm more, I'm more concerned about the integrity of the, well, we use the tear-down rebuild as an example, and it's, and it's character relative to the houses that are immediately adjacent to it on a small lot. Then I am worried about whether somebody's confused about what they're going to do on that small lot. And if we make this change, it actually makes life, it makes the view for the neighbors less interesting. You could, you could end up with a single plane wall, what's the height limitation, 32 feet on a 50-foot lot? You get a, you get a, you get a single plane wall that you're looking out your kitchen window at, 32 feet high with no setback, no, no articulation.
Well, we have an articulation ordinance. That was part of the last go-around when we amended the ordinance. So sidewalks have to have a certain amount of articulation every 30 feet. So there is, there is language to address that, and that has been, I think, successful.
All right, so regardless of whether we make this change, we still have the articulation rule in place?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's currently in place.
And this is, this is actually the same requirement that the planning commission recommended over a year ago. It was the council that added in that choice.
I'm the one that wanted to try the choice.
Member Staunton?
Was there, at the time we made those changes, too, we did a height change, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
From 35 to 30?
To 30.
Yes.
And, and is that staying the same?
Yes.
That is.
So there wasn't an option in terms of that?
No.
The option was just on whether to use the new or the old setback regulations with this, with the stepping. And just to beat this horse a little further, if, if, under the current ordinance, if you are five-foot setback from one side and seven-foot from another, the five-foot side at 15 feet has to step in or not?
It does not.
So it, so if you, if you meet the 12-foot, either through a six and six or a five and seven, you can go straight up as it is now. That's one of the options.
Today.
Today.
Correct.
You don't have to do six and six. You could do five and seven. Or you can choose to step it in and go all the way to five feet on each side?
Correct.
Okay.
We're not seeing that often.
No, then under the current ordinance, that's what you can do. You can go five foot, but then when you get up to the 15 feet, then you have to step it in?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to make it really clear about what exists today and what we're talking about here. Because we're kind of, we're, we're saying both. And I just want to make it really clear because it is confusing for someone trying to sift out what it is today and what we're considering changing it to. So what we're changing it to is a minimum of a 12-foot setback. Combined, correct. Combined. And that's what you can do today or currently, you can do- No, no, don't say it. Don't even say it, because we're not considering that today. No. No, that's what it is today. And if we don't change it, then we can talk about that. But what we're, what we're considering a change to would eliminate that piece. Correct. So that's why I just want to make it really clear.
The piece we're not talking about.
Yeah, the piece we're not talking about. Yes.
So based on, based on Member Staunton's comments, what happened to the articulation?
It's still there.
Still there?
Still there. The lower height's still there. Everything's still there. It's just that one piece is going away.
All right. I, I think I got it. If anybody's got it, it's you. All right, section eight.
All right, the rest of them are not nearly as confusing. So section eight is correcting a typo in the ordinance. In the R2 district, the maximum height is 35 feet. And we're also making a change on the corresponding table with the height overlay map to make that consistent. And the last section is in regard to R2 non-conforming lots. Currently, if a duplex is torn down on a non-conforming R2 lot, you need a variance to do that, and it goes before the planning commission. In comparison, in an R1 district, most of the lots in Edina are non-conforming. They don't meet our, our standards. But if you remove a home on a non-conforming R1 lot, you can rebuild as long as you meet all the setback requirements. So the recommendation here is to allow R2 properties to do that same thing, rather than have to come before the planning commission to consider a variance for, it's a lot variance. I suppose we've had a few that have required setback variances in addition to the lot area variances. But in general, most of those variance requests, the new structure meets all of our, our setback and height requirements. So that's, that's the, the last section here. And I apologize, in, in your packet, there was a zoning map that was included in there. The planning commission was considering allowing single-family homes to be built in the R2 zoning district. Currently, a single-family home can't be built in the R2 district. And we were considering that over the last couple of months, and they decided to take that out. So that's not before you this evening, but the map still made it in.
So, Mr. Mayor, on that, on that last topic, Carrie, and maybe it's a question for Roger. Weren't they entitled to rebuild already in a non-conforming?
Not on an R2 property.
But under state law, wouldn't they be entitled to rebuild if they didn't expand? But under state law, wouldn't they be entitled to rebuild if they didn't expand? So our code basically just wasn't conforming with what the state statute would require?
That's good to know.
But this will make it conform?
This will make it conform.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
I think with regard to that side yard setback conversation we have, it would have been ironic if that would have been in section eight for the old military folks. It seemed appropriate for a section eight discussion. Okay. Thank you, Director Teague. All right. This is a matter set for public hearing. We're looking at this on a first reading basis. That means we go through this twice. You've heard us talk about some of the things we want staff to look at between first reading and second reading, and it will come back to us. But nonetheless, this council will take action of some type after the public hearing on this. Is there anyone, I'm going to open this up now for public testimony. Is there anyone, anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward with regard to these proposed changes in the zoning ordinance amendment? Welcome.
John Crabtree, 5408 Oaklawn Avenue. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to talk a little bit further about window wells this evening with two points that I'd like to make. Jordan, could I have my first picture, please? Picture you see in front of you was taken recently at 5509 Park Place. It's a window well. It's a sort of window well on the south side of a house. It's six feet, front to back. I think the effect of it is to, you know, part of the effect of it is to help, I think, the developer sort of work their way around some of the zoning ordinance in regard to height. And I think the thing I would ask you to do is to consider just how deep a window well should be. We don't know if this is a window well, a walkout, an outdoor patio, whatever. That's my first point, that you need, please, to give some attention as to the depth of the window well. Jordan, could I have my second picture, please?
John, I have a point of clarification.
Yes?
When you're using the word "deep," what dimension are you talking about?
Front to back.
Front to back, not vertical depth, but-
Nope. Yeah, front to back.
Horizontal depth.
Horizontal depth.
Okay, thank you.
It's the best way I could describe it. Thank you. The second question relates to window wells, and it also relates to clearance around the side of a house. The picture you now see in front of you was taken at 5420 Oaklawn Avenue. It's a tear down which is currently taking place. What you're seeing here is the excavation was literally from lot line to lot line. From the left hand, you can see the shoring. On the right-hand side, you see this edge. That hole was dug to within two inches of the property line. On the right-hand side, you see an orange construction fence, which was put onto the adjacent owner's property without that owner's permission. They were away for the winter. And when I called the owner to let them know this had happened, it came as a surprise to the, to the owner. So the real question which was sitting in my mind is why on earth did this happen in the first place? And why did you dig, why did they dig to within two inches of the property line? It was only when they backfilled the site that I actually found out the answer to that question. Jordan, could I have my next picture, please? And here we see the site after the backfilling has taken place. The construction fence has been moved, so it's still just on the neighbor's property. And it was when I saw the tracks of the bobcat in the dirt, they're not shown here, we see this window well jutting out on the left-hand side. The inner edge of the window well is five foot, six inches from the property line. The outer edge of the window well, measured, was four foot, 10 inches from the property line. These houses, I mean, if we've gone back to the previous picture, you would have seen this big part of dirt, which all, everything had to be backfilled. It has to be done by mechanical means. A bobcat is four foot wide minimum. I'm asking the city council to consider making a minimum six-foot clearance on one side of a house, so that you can actually, the developer can build a house without having to encroach on neighboring property. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Anyone else wish to come forward and inquire or comment regarding these proposed changes?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? Got a motion, a second to close the public hearing discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay. Carrie? And anyone in the council wish to lead out the discussion? Member Swenson?
You know, it's kind of interesting, because I remember when we finally put the rule in that you had to be able to get one, around one side of the house with a lawnmower. It was because someone in Morningside had built their house so that they couldn't get to their backyard without walking down their neighbor's driveway and walking over their neighbor's property to mow their backyard. And I remember someone asking me, well, why didn't you have that law? And I remember saying, how do I legislate against stupid? But I actually think, Mr. Crabtree, has a pretty, pretty interesting idea that if you do work on your yard, you should be able to do it within the realm of your yard. So we're not going to look at it in this particular changes today, but I would recommend, Carrie, that we do put it on your work agenda for looking at it for the planning commission. Because I think he has got a valid point in how do we handle that?
We can certainly do that. And what we learned from our Chicagoland trip is we saw construction fencing all around, containing a site six-foot chain link fence. So that might be one way to address the issue as well.
Yeah. He had good pictures, and I think we should pay attention to them. But other than that, I would change, I'll support the changes, even though you took away my cute idea of the five foot five, and it goes in. So I'll make a motion to approve this.
On a first reading basis?
On a first reading basis.
A second? A second. Motion, a second to approve the proposed changes on a first reading basis. Any further discussion?
Just a quick one, if you don't mind.
Member Rindell?
Okay, thank you. Regarding getting to the backyard to do lawn care in the backyard and having to go in the neighbor's yard, it does happen a lot. It happens a lot on narrow lots, where there's a sidewalk around one side of somebody's house, and they have a lawnmower. Either they're going to run the lawnmower along the sidewalk, or they're going to walk on the grass, which is the neighbor's property right next to the sidewalk. So when you have houses that are close to one another, hopefully you have neighbors that are friendly, and, and you both encroach on each other's property periodically. But, but that, you know, it just is something that, that from a zoning standpoint, I think we're finally dealing with it, so.
But, Member Swenson, correct me if I'm wrong, but your suggestion was that Carrie look into having an ordinance that says, the work that you do is done on your own, with, through access through your own property and not through somebody else?
It may be we handle it that way. It may be that we handle it that you have to be able to get to the perimeter of your house.
Right. But rather than naming a dimension?
Right, right. I'm not, I'm not going to presume what they'll come up with. I, they're good people.
And there are instances where an agreement is made with the neighbor to encroach on their property as long as they restore it. And so we do see a number of those, where there isn't a cooperation with the neighbor.
Member Staunton?
I would offer a friendly amendment to the mover and the secondary, asking staff to clarify the window well definition language that we discussed earlier.
Yes. Well, I thought we, I thought that was part of it.
That was understood.
I don't know exactly what that is, but I think from the discussion, they kind of understand what we're driving at.
Mayor, members of the council.
Mr. Knudsen?
I found a definition of window well, and I'll see if this sits what you have in mind. A window well, a window well means a space maintained below a, between a below-grade window and the surrounding soil. That's a fairly accepted definition.
I like that.
And then we'd take, we'd keep that last sentence of that definition, the existing definition.
Fine.
The other thing that was concerning to me in Mr. Crabtree's presentation was with respect to window wells and how if we ignore them, the outside dimension of a window well in the side yard setback requirement, you can see potential for abuse. It's like, it's like cybersecurity, the way we've been playing cat and mouse with some of the builders, not all of them, there are a lot of good ones. But, so I'd like to have the planning commission look at that, too. And it goes to this minimum side yard setback issue, that, you know, you ought to have all of your house within the lot and maybe a certain distance from the lot line, whether you're working on it or whether it's permanently sited there on a tear down rebuild basis. Does it, does that merit some consideration by the planning commission?
Because it is, I mean, I think it's a fair point, because right now it just exempts window wells from the setback requirements. So in theory, you could bring it all the way to the property line, right?
On one side of a house, you could. You need at least three feet on one side, but on the other side, you could bring those right to the lot.
And, and it, we don't even define how, technically, how wide the window well. I mean, there's a-
We don't.
Like you say, it's a lot of skullduggery here, trying to work around what we're, what we're really intending, but we have to tighten it up to avoid that, I guess.
On Mr. Crabtree's picture, so the window well actually was poured as part of the foundation with-
Right.
-the frame. So it went all the way down to the very bottom, which is kind of an interesting way of doing it.
All right. Sufficient guidance, Director Teague?
Yes, I think so.
Attorney Knudsen, thank you for that definitional assistance. All right. The next public hearing matter-
So you needed, did we vote?
Oh, we didn't vote yet, did we? All right. We need a voice vote. All those in favor of granting first reading on attached ordinance 2015-07, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay. Carrie? All right. Next public hearing is the proposed lot subdivision, I guess it would be characterized. It's a preliminary plat with lot width and area variances for 5825 Ashcroft Avenue. Director Teague?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a, as mentioned, a two-lot subdivision in Ashcroft. This is in the Concord neighborhood, in the block in between 59th and 58th Street. So look at the property, 5825. As you see, it is oversized compared to the rest of the homes on this block. This area was originally platted as part of the Fairfax addition. They were all 50-foot wide lots. However, the homeowner who built this house in 1953, built the original house kind of on the north half of the property. As time went on, it ended up being connected with the, with the garage. So it exists as the rambler that you see in the picture today. And what the applicant is proposing to do is remove that rambler and construct two new single-family homes that would generally be located where the existing home sits today. There's a number of mature trees on the site that could be protected with any new construction here. The planning commission added a recommendation in their, their recommendation here that adds that the new homes would be subject to the tree preservation ordinance that goes into effect July 1st. In all likelihood, when these homes are built, that would be into effect. But on the chance that these would develop prior to July 1st, they've added that condition. The minimum lot size in this area is 9,000 square feet, 75 feet in width, and 135 feet in depth. In areas where the predominance of homes are above that, the, the minimum lot size is established by the median of all homes within 500 feet. The applicant has run that median calculation, even though these lots fall below, just to demonstrate where the medians are in relation to what's proposed. And as you see, the, the proposed 50-foot wide lots would meet the median of 50 feet. The median is 135 feet, which is met. The median lot area is 6790, and the proposed lots are 6781. So they're, they're almost there. Again, essentially, this whole area was built with 50-foot wide lots. So the request before the council is the preliminary plat, the lot width variances from 75 to 50 feet, and lot area variances from 9,000 square feet to 6,781 square feet. So the primary issue that planning commission and staff considered, and asked that the planning commission, or the council considers, is are the variance standards met? And planning commission and staff believes that they are. The practical difficulty here is the existing oversized lot compared to the neighborhood, and is it reasonable to require the applicant here to continue their, which is reasonable use, existing single-family home? But when compared to the rest of the block at 50-foot wide lots, is it reasonable to prevent them, a development that's similar to everyone else on each side of Ashcroft and the street adjacent to the east? It would restore the existing plat of all 50-foot wide lots. Again, if the, if the project would be denied, they would be denied a use that everyone else on the block enjoys. 50-foot lots wouldn't alter the character of the neighborhood. The vast majority here, again, are 50-foot wide lots. Just to give you a little perspective and history of some of the variances, similar requests that have been made in this area. There have been, over the last eight or nine years, six requests. Three of them have been approved, and three have been denied. The three that were approved are all located in this general area here, numbers one, three, and four. And they're in areas where the vast majority of the lots, as they were developed, were 50-foot wide lots. The three that were denied, while these areas may have been originally platted as 50-foot wide lots, and I'll show a couple of examples of those in a minute, many of those were combined. So there are larger lots in this area that also throw the medians off, and we'll take a look at that in a minute here also. So this is one of those subdivisions that was approved by the council. It's on Oaklawn, 5920. You can see this was the only, this is the exist, there are the lot that was subdivided. There are two new homes on there today. It was the last one on that block. All others were 50-foot wide across is Pamela Park. So that one was approved. To show you some of the ones that were denied, this one down here on the corner of Concord is just a couple blocks south of the property that we're looking at today, which is located up here. So here's the lot. And as you see, the adjacent lot was two 50-foot wide lots combined. There was one adjacent to the north and east. There's a couple further to the east. You see the lots to the west are larger, and all of the homes to the south were larger. When the median was calculated here, the median was actually over 10,000 square feet. So that one was seen as different from those 50-foot wide lot predominantly areas. So this one was denied. There were a couple, one on Oaklawn and one on Brookview, that were proposed for 50-foot wide lot subdivisions, and those were both denied. Again, as you see, within this area, there are several lots that were oversized. And so those were denied. So staff and the planning commission believe that because this is the last one on the block, predominance, again, are 50-foot wide lots. So staff and the planning commission are recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in the approving resolution. And with that, I can stand for questions.
Questions for Director Teague at this point in time? All right. No questions for you, Director Teague? Does the applicant wish to make a presentation this evening, Director Teague?
Yes. They have about a 10-minute presentation.
I noticed that they made a presentation, Mr. Johnson made a presentation at the planning commission, so it'd be helpful to have him make one to the council as well. And we'll start with your name and address, please.
Yes. Mayor Haveland and council members, I'm Jeffrey A. Johnson. I live at 5825 Ashcroft Avenue. And with me tonight is my wife, Janine. We are husband and wife, and we're both owners of that property, and we have resided there since 1981. And so I do have this presentation. It's the same one that I made for the planning commission, but I'll go through it a little bit more quickly, because I know some of you have seen that. We're located in the Concord neighborhood. Ashcroft is a very small street. It runs three blocks long. And it is east of Highway 100 and west of Wooddale Avenue. And down there at the bottom of the slide, you'll see that we moved to the city in June of 1980, and the following year in July of 1981 is when we purchased this particular property. We've been residents of that, resided in that property since. Here's an image that I got off of the Hennepin County website that shows where our property is in relation to the others on the block. And you'll see that 59th Street is to the south of us. We front on Ashcroft Avenue. And in that picture, you'll see part of the school grounds off to the west. Here's another image from the Hennepin County website, where we have some of the numbers there are the lot width. And you'll see an 18 in the middle of the top lot, that's lot 18, and the middle of the south lot- And the middle of the south lot has a 17 in it, that's lot 17. Those are the two lots. They're both 50 feet wide, and they're about 135.7-plus feet in depth. So in the next slide, the top there is just what the legal description is. The north lot, which is lot 18, was actually purchased in 1953 by the former owners that we bought the property from. They bought that lot in 1953, and they constructed the home, the rambler, which is a three-bedroom rambler, in that year. The following year, in 1954, they purchased a lot to the south, and they pulled a building permit in 1954 to build a breezeway and a garage. But I don't think that they built it because also in 1956, they pulled a permit to build a breezeway and a garage. So, and the dimensions on the breezeway in the 1956 permit were different than the 1954 permit, and the one in the 56 matches the current size of that breezeway, which we've now converted into a full four-season, it's our family room. So that's a little history of how the lots came together originally. This was platted back in the 1940s, I understand. Those were two legal lots of record at that point in time. When they were purchased, they were purchased at two different points in time, and in fact, the south lot is actually torrent title, and the north lot is abstract title. So there's a little difference there between the two lots. The next slide that I have kind of shows the neighborhood. We actually came to the neighborhood for the schools. I'm a former school teacher in a prior career, and so having good schools for our boys, our two boys, was very important to Janine and I, and that's why we chose this neighborhood. But I have to tell you, being at the meeting here throughout the entire course of the meeting, I have to tell you, we really appreciate the police officers who are recognized. It's a very safe community. We think that they do just a wonderful job, and so I want to take some of my time to say that. Very, very safe community. The schools are great. I'm so glad that it passed the amendment, or the resolution passed yesterday. I think that that, again, shows how everybody appreciates the schools in our city. We've got great schools. And then also, public works. I've got some friends who are in some of the other suburbs. They don't get their streets plugged quite like we do. So we have great public works here in the city, and that's kind of what makes our neighborhood and our city great. Here's a little image there of our neighborhood. We think it's a great neighborhood. Now, before I get to the four questions that have to be answered to approve a variance, and that's by state law, there's three things by state law. In our city code, we have four questions in the city code to approve it. The first thing I'm going to do is talk a little bit about my 500-foot ring neighborhood because I think you have to analyze that first and kind of get some of the facts straight before you get to even addressing the questions. So the first slide that I have here is, there's one other lot that is also a 100-foot wide lot in our neighborhood, and that's at the corner of 59th and Concord, and I have a picture of it here on the next screen that you would see. So on that screen, we're looking at my 500, our 500-foot ring neighborhood. In the center, you will see our lot, and at the southwest edge of that neighborhood down here at the corner of 59th and right here where I'm pointing with the cursor there, is another lot that's by, a 100 feet wide. And that one has a rambler on it. So there are two lots in this neighborhood. If we didn't get approved, we would, our lot would maintain at 100 feet, and we would match only one of the lots in our neighborhood. I also, further analyzing the 500-foot ring, I found that there were 10 lots in our neighborhood ring that are bigger than 75 feet, and here they are enumerated. On the next slide, I've got them pictured out here in the pink color. Down here in the southwest quadrant of our neighborhood down here, there are two 75-foot lots. Now, again, this is the Fairfax plat here, so all of these were 50-foot lots when they were platted, but when those were built, they took a lot and a half to make two 75-foot lots. Up here is the Concord Grove subdivision, north of 58th. All of the lots in that subdivision are a minimum of 80 feet wide, and so the ones that you see there are also bigger. So what we have here is, all of those that I've pictured in those two drawings are those that are 75-foot wide and bigger. And so what you can see there is, of the roughly 100 lots in our ring neighborhood, 11 of them then are 75 feet wide and greater. So in terms of a variance request, there's only 11, or out of the roughly 100, that match the current zoning requirement of a 75-foot wide lot. All of the others would need a variance to be built upon as vacant lots. There's also some that would be in the next step-down category of being 50 feet wide but not quite 75, and I've enumerated those in this next slide, and then I've pictured them out in orange in the 500-foot ring. So what we see here is that there's a couple out on the perimeter on the very south end here, these two lots that I'm kind of hovering over here with the arrow. Those two lots are 67-foot lots. Again, they're part of the Fairfax plat, so they started out as 50s, 50-foot wide lots, but then were combined in a certain way to get to 67-foot lots. Up here, along, across the street from the school grounds, there's a lot that's 59 feet, 65 feet, 70 feet, and 55 feet. So there was some creative lot splits and combinations up there to get some bigger lots also. And so there's a picture right there of all of the lots in this 500-foot ring that are bigger than 50 feet. Everything else that you would see in white would be all of the lots that are 50 feet, or some of them are 49 at the corners. All of the remaining lots, 81 of those, would be either 50 feet or 49 feet. All of the lots on our block are 50 feet wide. All of the lots across the street, on the other side of Ashcroft Avenue, are 50-foot wide lots. All of the lots that would have a view of our property are 50-foot wide lots. All of the lots that we would back up to are 50-foot wide lots. So the next screen that I've put together here, where all of them are highlighted in yellow, those are all of the 50-foot lots that are in our 500-foot ring neighborhood. So at this point, then, I think we can get to the questions because that's kind of all the analysis I've got of the 500-foot ring. And the first question that comes up in approving a variance would be, would granting of the variance relieve practical difficulties in complying with the zoning ordinance, and is the use a reasonable use? So it's kind of a compound question there. And I'll go with reasonable use first. And so the first bullet point is, if we're approved, we're looking for two 50-foot lots, of course. And then the next one is, I do think that this means that we're a reasonable use, what we're requesting here, because there are many, many lots, not just in our neighborhood but throughout the city of Edina, many lots that are 50 feet in wide, in width. So I do think that 50 feet is reasonable land use. Now, is there a practical difficulty here? And I would think yes, and I would say that without the granting of the requested variance, a practical difficulty would exist because the applicant, that would be Janine and I, cannot do with our land what neighboring property owners can do with the same amount of geographic land that's comparably, or that's identically zoned. So within the same identical zoning, we can't do what neighboring landowners can do that would have two lots. So, and then the next one, I just say that the size of the lot, this lot of record is twice the size of most of the lots in our neighborhood, and that's a unique practical difficulty, I think, also. A couple of things that I didn't put down on the slide here, but I'd like you to consider as well, is a house that would be on this double-wide lot really wouldn't fit the character of our neighborhood because all of the lots, or most of the lots, are 50 feet, especially those that are closest to our home. And so our lot, or a home, that's on that double-wide lot would stand out as being out of character with the rest of them. And that being out of character, it would have a little bit of a value diminution because it wouldn't fit with the neighborhood quite so well. So we think whether it's an existing home on that 100-foot wide lot, or a new home that would be built on the 100-foot wide lot, we think it would have a little bit less value because it would not fit the character of the neighborhood. And the other thing I wanted to say there that I didn't put on the slide is, you know, had Janine and I, over the years, we've lived in this neighborhood for many years, had we purchased a lot north of us, and the lot north of that, we could have owned two 50-foot lots and rented those homes, and we'd be able to have two lots on a 100-foot expanse of land, whereas on ours, right now, we can only have the one. The next question we need to turn our attention to is, would this correct extraordinary circumstances applicable to this property but not applicable to other properties in the vicinity or zoning district? And so our property is one of only two 100-foot wide lots that are in our neighborhood. It's twice the width of every other lot in this block. It's twice the width and land area of every lot that faces it on the opposite side of Ashcroft Avenue. And additionally, every single lot that's on the streetscape of Ashcroft Avenue, all the way up and down Ashcroft Avenue here, all of these lots, not only in our block and across the street, but even in the block to the south of us, are all 50-foot wide lots. So everything on Ashcroft Avenue, in our subject neighborhood, on the streetscape there, are 50-foot wide lots. Would this be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance? And I think that it would be. The proposed subdivision and variance would meet the intent of zoning, is it would create two lots of similar size to all of the other lots within this neighborhood. The proposed subdivision and variance would restore the land to its originally platted condition of two 50-foot wide lots. And that's really what we're asking, is just to restore this to what it was when it was originally platted and approved. And then the very last question that we come to is, would approving this not alter the essential character of the neighborhood? And so what I have here is that if granted, the proposed subdivision of this property would create two lots that would conform in width, depth, and land area within this neighborhood. The proposed lots are consistent with the median width and the median depth and the median land area. And then I give the statistics there at the bottom, which you also have from our surveyor's drawing. There are approximately three-fourths of the lots in our neighborhood are really the same size as ours. So we not only meet this median, which is about the 50% level, but we're really more at the three-fourths level by having three-fourths of the lots in our neighborhood being 50-foot wide. And then the next bullet point, if the subdivision and variance were not granted, it would perpetuate a lot that is twice the size of a typical lot within this neighborhood. It would forever leave us out of character with the neighborhood. And then finally, the last thing that I have here in my PowerPoint is that the proposed subdivision and granting of a lot width variance would result in two lots that are more in-character with the neighborhood. So that's my PowerPoint presentation. I just have one other thing to mention, and that, that's because I was asked this at the Planning Commission. One of the commission members asked if we had, you know, how our neighborhood feedback was and what we had heard from neighbors. We held an open house on March 7th and sent out a flyer to all of the people in our neighborhood and asked them, and told them that we were contemplating doing this, invited them to an open house. It was on Saturday, March 7th, from 2:00 until 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon. And we held this, we had one of the builders in the neighborhood that's building new homes granted us the permission to go in and use that new home so that our neighbors could see kind of what the character is of these new homes being built. We thought that was a good idea. So we only had two people show up for the open house, and both of the people that came were in favor of this and were positive. We had two emails that came after that but didn't attend. One was positive. The other one had a question about lot depth. I answered that for this particular lady about the depth of our lot. And then she also said, "Well, you know, I'm just not in favor of subdivisions in general." So that was kind of a negative comment there. And then also, we kind of informally have talked to our neighbors and people that we know in our neighborhood, and we've lived there for a long time and know them all. And we've had no negative comments on this. In fact, we've had many positive comments from our neighbors. So that's my presentation. I thank you for your time, and...
Questions for Mr. Johnson at this point in time? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And I'm going to open this matter up for public testimony at this point in time. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and testify regarding this matter, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second? A motion and second to close the public hearing. Discussion, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carrie? Anyone care to advance a motion for discussion purposes?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2015-49 approving the preliminary plat with variances, which is the lot subdivision request. Member Swenson?
I'm going to vote against this. I have fairly consistently, there is a house a block down on Ashcroft that is a 100-foot wide lot, among other 50-foot wide lots, and they just had a house rebuilt. You're going to have less square footage if you have one house on a 100-foot lot than two houses on 50-foot lots in today's building standards for tear downs. I also was approached by three of the young families on the street that are not in favor of this. I'm sorry, they can't come and tell you that directly, but they did stop me twice now that I've walked down your street because I walk my dog in your neighborhood all the time because I live in your neighborhood. So I won't support it, but that's why.
Other comments? Member Stewart?
Just for the record, I, assuming this does pass, I ask some questions, and I think it's important that it's clear that the homeowner would need to pay for a new curb cut if there are new curb cuts needed, as well as for new permits such as watershed district permits.
Director Teague?
They would, whether it's the, the property owner, the builder, they would be responsible for curb cut permit and watershed district permits as well.
It's the, yeah, it's the property owner at the time the curb cut is made. So it may not be the current homeowner.
That's my point.
Okay.
Member Stott?
So I, I had the privilege in my nine years on the Planning Commission to be part of all of those variance applications that Carrie, Carrie went through, and they're, they're difficult cases, and I think it's, what's really important for me to state here is that I think they are very individual. They're very much about the facts of each individual case, and I have voted both ways on those various, those various applications in the past. I'm, I'm persuaded that this is a variance that we ought to grant in this case because the specific facts of this particular application are, leave me convinced that this matches the neighborhood. I think Mr. Johnson did a nice job of articulating the fact that all of the lots on the other side of the street, all the lots on the same side of the street, all the lots on the lot behind are, are 50-foot lots, and so I think this really does match the character. I also thought it was helpful, the history of how this happened, that the previous owners had built on one lot, that there was then a second lot that was purchased, and prior to our zoning code, which now would prohibit the building of just a garage on a lot, that was done and then added on. So, so I think under the facts of this case, I'm, I'm willing to grant the variance. The other thing that I would just note is, you know, there's a lot of discussion in these cases about what's going to get built later, and, and that this gives the opportunity to build two houses, and that they might be big houses or they might not. Our zoning code has setback regulations and height regulations and, and lot coverage regulations that are going to govern these two lots after the variance is granted, if it is granted. But it would also, the same thing could be done on any one of the other 50-foot lots along that neighborhood. So I don't, I try to think about these in terms... So, I don't, I try to think about these in terms of the character of the lot, not the house that's going to go on it later, because we have other regulations for that. So, I'm supportive of the variance, but mindful as well that we are likely to get other applications in the future, and I am very focused on the specific facts of this one, and will deal with the specific facts of future ones when they come forward.
Thank you, Member Staunton. Member Brindle?
I think Kevin stated that very well, that each of these is considered individually. The next subdivision request, which there will be another, and another, who knows where they will be, but each is considered on its own merit and not compared to others, because they, each lot is unique. I have voted both ways on subdivisions, based on a couple of factors. A big one for me is stormwater. And what is, what is on this property, how is stormwater managed on this property? It so happens that St. John's, which is the street to the west, is ten feet, the grade is ten feet higher than this street. This lot is flat from front to back, and it backs up to a home that is kind of, if you will, built into a hill onto St. John's. So, if somebody's going to have a stormwater difficulty, it's going to more often be the Ashcroft side of the street than the St. John's side of the street, because the St. John's side of the street is going to send the water toward Ashcroft. What this property has is four large, one, two, three, four, four large trees. I ventured to guess that they are minimum century-old trees, and it's extremely important, and I think we should put this as part of our resolution on this, that those trees be maintained. Trees are part of the reason that this property does not have difficulty with stormwater, because they drink an enormous amount of water. So, even one of those trees being removed, there would be standing water on this property. So, I think it's very important that we have tree preservation as a primary requirement in this subdivision. There is on A27, a page in our packet of this item, there's kind of a sketch of two, where two houses would be placed, and two driveways. And I would like to consider these, and have it go on the record, that I consider these to be arbitrary, because in one case, a driveway does go right over, or right through, the ash tree, and it's a, it's a very large ash tree at the curb at the front of this house. So, in keeping with the desire to make sure that we preserve those four large trees on this property, just make sure that what goes there does, does fit within that. There's two small cherry trees that, actually, as cherry trees are small, they're, they've been there a while, they're very healthy, it'd be nice to see those preserved as well. They are not in the way of putting a building there. I see no reason why those would need to be touched. So, trees are a big deal on this piece of property. I have no problem dividing this piece of property. I think it's, one large house on a hundred-foot lot, which is what would happen here, it would be big, because it can be, would, in my opinion, be out of character. So, granting the subdivision is what I would like to put my support behind.
So, is it your, is it your friendly motion? I think Member Stewart made it, that the, any grant be subject to the tree preservation ordinance? Any approval?
Yes.
I believe Director Teague, when he presented the motion, discussed how the tree ordinance that takes effect in July would apply to this, that's already part of the motion.
Right, but the tree ordinance doesn't say you can't take down a tree. And so, what I'm saying is, I want these four trees to be preserved.
It has very specific rules about managing trees.
Your Honor, and members of council, I, we've just had a bit of discussion, and you are able to set some terms or conditions for a subdivision like this. The, what, what Mr. Teague said, and what Councilmember Brindle said, though, are not, are not the same thing. So, what, what Councilmember Brindle is suggesting is a standard that's higher than our tree ordinance for this particular place, and it would be a standard higher than we hold any other lot to in the community at this point.
Member Stewart?
So, I think the tree ordinance is sufficient, but I did neglect to state my position when I made my points earlier about who pays for the additional cost of curb cuts and things. So, I agree, I think Member Staunton stated very well that each of these situations is unique, and I think that's very important to understand. The facts here, I believe, support the subdivision. One other fact that hasn't been brought out yet is that this was approved and supported both by staff and by the Planning Commission. I consider that to be also a very important element of my vote in favor.
Thank you. I'm going to support this matter as well. The resolution as crafted, the last condition provides that it be subject to the tree ordinance, and I think it would be difficult to hold a particular property to a higher standard than what we've established through our tree preservation ordinance, especially when that isn't a factor relative to the variance findings. And my personal opinion is that the variance findings, both expressed through the Planning Commission's decision, and through Mr. Johnson's presentation, in my mind, those requirements have been met. So, I'd be supporting this matter as well. And as I noted, it is subject to the tree preservation ordinance that takes effect in July. So, we've got a motion and a second. We don't have, and we had a friendly amendment that wasn't accepted. Any other discussion the two of you want to have, or should we go ahead and vote?
I want the bur oak saved. I do, seriously.
Mary, which one is the bur oak?
It's on the south side of the house. If anything is taken down, I don't want that one taken down, but I don't want any of them taken down. So, there.
All right. I think the one most at risk might be the ash, which actually, the homeowners have done a nice job to keep it healthy and preserve it. It looks like it's in good shape.
And my question would be, for how long?
Long as it lives.
And how, how do we?
Okay, okay, okay.
The trouble is, that tree, beautiful as it is, and, you know, I'm not supporting this, but it's right at the setback for the front of the southerlymost house. So, it literally is sitting within where they would build a house. They would have to, they would, and so, to move a house far enough away to not hurt the roots of that tree, Mary, I think you would find that that house would be set back another five feet on the lot line, seven feet on the lot line, so it would then go that much deeper into everybody else's backyard as it's built.
Right.
Though the tree is beautiful, yes.
Mary's getting more comfortable with that tree ordinance, I think.
No?
No.
Well, no, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it. I mean, it, I've made myself clear.
All right. All those in favor of adopting, this is a simple majority vote, I believe.
No, it's not.
Favorable roll call, majority?
Yes.
All right. A roll call vote, three members to pass. Clerk Megan. Excuse me.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Members Staunton?
Aye.
Member Stewart?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Nay.
Mayor Hufflin?
Aye. Thank you. All right. Our final public hearing of the evening deals with the Living Streets Plan that we've been talking about for quite some time, and there's Mark Nolan, here he is. Mark Nolan is here to make that presentation for us.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, for taking the time for the presentation on the Living Streets Plan that is before you for approval here this evening. Just briefly, the agenda, some of the things that I am going to talk about tonight are the path to living streets, so where we've been and how we got here. I would also like to talk about the plan's preparation, and from whom we got input, the purpose of the plan, and then, hopefully briefly, how the, basically how the plan is structured. So, Edina's Path to Living Streets, the City of Edina has been involved in active living efforts and initiatives for many years, and going back to 2006, the council adopted the Governor's Fit City Program, and then, 2008, many goals pertaining to active living, and the ideas that eventually became Living Streets were incorporated into the Comprehensive Plan update. The council then adopted, and, one more arrow here, in 2011, the, to join the Green Steps Cities Program, and then, also, the Deetown effort was launched in 2011 as well. 2012, there was a Living Streets workshop early in that year. We received some funding to develop the Living Streets policy, and the PACS fund was also adopted in that year as well. Living Streets policy was approved by council in late 2013, or late summer 2013, and we're here tonight to talk about the Living Streets Plan approval and eventual implementation. So, the plan was prepared, starting with the approval of the policy in September. We began preparing the plan in September of 2013, working with the Living Streets Advisory Group, made up of members of boards and commissions. We met with that group monthly for most of last year, and then, as needed, with an internal staff advisory group, and working on that draft plan, getting their input, excuse me. And throughout the past year, we've also presented this, the Living Streets Plan in draft form, various components of the plan to city council, and also to several boards and commissions. So, we presented to council twice, with the Transportation Commission, two times with the Planning Commission, and also with the Energy and Environment Commission. And then, in February this year, we held two public meetings regarding the draft plan. So, the purpose of the Living Streets Plan really begins with the adopted policy, which specifically calls for the development of a plan to guide implementation of living streets, and so that's what this plan is intended to do. This plan lays out how living streets can be implemented, when to take advantage of opportunities that present themselves to implement living streets, and then what those tools are. It's what's the kit of parts, the toolbox of elements for living streets that can be applied, depending on context, et cetera. And it also will help guide staff, and our consultants and developers, when designing streets and proposing development projects in the city. It's a very clear path for all of us and all of them, in terms of what this community values, and what it's looking for in its infrastructure projects. The idea is that the Living Streets Plan will be included by reference in future updates of the Comprehensive Plan, and perhaps components of this plan can be moved into the Comprehensive Plan. But the idea is that the Living Streets can continue to be a working document that can be updated, and then still included by reference in the plan, so it can be updated periodically to reflect current context and conditions. Next, I'd like to talk about the structure of the plan, and how it's put together. It's broken down into six chapters that I will visit here briefly. The first section is the background section, and somewhat self-explanatory, talks about existing conditions, and the overall challenge in implementing living streets, and the issues that we face in building infrastructure in today's environment. Talks about the history and maintenance of roadways, safety of all roadway users, and then also environmental concerns, and then starts to address about, you know, what are living streets really? And living streets, in short, is public realm and street design that provides for multiple modes of transportation, reduces environmental impacts by minimizing pavement surfaces and managing stormwater, and then focuses on quality of life aspects and community identity. It also talks about the benefits of living streets, as you can see in the report, and those benefits are divided into safety, improved safety, increased or improved public health, and the environment, increased transportation choice, and then also economic benefits that are borne out through the application of living streets. Now, the Living Streets policy was adopted, as I stated, in August of 2013. The policy is also included here as part of the plan, just so, to weave all of this together. And you'll notice that the Living Streets policy is organized a little bit differently than it was initially approved. That's because throughout the process of drafting the plan, the team and stakeholders found it necessary to go back to the policy and not necessarily tweak or change things, but to make some clarifications, and that's what the policy does here. So, while the policy and the vision remains the same as the approved, as the policy that was approved a year and a half ago, the Living Streets principles were just given some more specificity. So, those Living Streets principles are divided up into categories, all users, all modes, connectivity, context sensitivity, and sustainability, and all those aspects are brought out into more detail throughout the implementation plan. And then, also, again, touches on benchmarks and performance measures, so we can look at potential data, and what does success actually look like. The next chapter of the plan is the network of living streets, and this chapter really starts off with a systems-wide view, and then funnels down to something that's a little bit more specific. And it starts off with the classification of living streets, and as I've talked with and presented to council before, the Living Streets classification are built on the current functional classification of roadways that we have in the Comprehensive Plan, local streets, collector streets, minor arterial streets, and these are different types of streets that have different types of functions, and increasing, general increasing amount of traffic from top to bottom. And the idea here is, the Living Streets Plan recommends the addition of a new street classification, recommends that that be incorporated into the next Comprehensive Plan, and that's the local connector, which is a subset of what is currently the local streets. Those connectors are in blue in the plan. Those local connectors are different from local streets in that they have average daily traffic of greater than 1,000 vehicles, or serve to connect between neighborhoods, destinations, and higher-level roadways. They could be called cut-through streets, they just, for various reasons, have more traffic, and potentially more issues or risks for all users of the roads, for safety of pedestrians and bicyclists. They just function a little bit differently. So, for the purposes of the plan, a new category was created. And regarding the network of living streets, this chart essentially lays out the major components of the streets, and how they would be, or could be utilized in each of those four street classifications, and it speaks to the number of driving lanes, parking lanes, whether or not there are bike facilities, and then also sidewalks. And what I want to call out here, what's key, is that a local street and a local connector can look very much the same. As I said, they're both considered local streets in the Comprehensive Plan, but due to the local connector's higher level of traffic often, and its connectivity functions, sidewalk is required on one side of that street, according to the plan. Sidewalks are not required on local streets unless they meet certain criteria, which we've just talked about before, and that is currently in our sidewalk facilities plan. These are the typical cross-sections. Essentially, these are visual representation of what that chart just showed. It's just a typical section for each street type, and what I want to make clear is that not every single roadway that are in these street types are to be built according to what the section looks like. If you looked at the cross-sections in the chart below, there are certain variables and ranges of dimensions, and when sidewalks or not sidewalks are called for on a particular street, so this is not a one-size-fits-all. These are the ideal conditions that we might look for in roadways, but context will dictate what elements are going to these roadways, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. This chapter also includes brief sections on the other types of networks in the city, pedestrian network, bicycle network, and the stormwater management and sustainable infrastructure network. These, while they are presented in and of themselves, obviously work coincident with the roadway network, and the picture we're showing here is the pedestrian network, which is essentially our approved sidewalk facilities map, but also showing existing and proposed new enhanced pedestrian crossings. Context is very important. As we have discussed, living streets are meant to be context-sensitive, so this chapter of the plan deals with the different types of context that can affect how streets are designed, and then also how different elements of living streets may be prioritized, starting with connectivity guidelines. So, if a particular project or a particular street is part of a regional transportation network, or is located nearby schools or parks, and we have to look at and think about ways to connect to those different types of uses and those... in those, those different areas. We look at demographic, demographics and neighborhood. Children, schools, elderly, disabled, what types of populations are in an area. Also looking at neighborhood character is also considered. Of course, natural resources, if there are water bodies or other sensitive areas that are near the site. And other contexts can also include site constraints and function. So the, the image in the bottom is Xerxes Avenue and I believe 58th Street. We run across a lot of these where we have ideals and, and things we're working towards with living streets, but sometimes we just have to deal with what's on the ground. And situations like this, where we're dealing with steep slopes or other obstacles, that can have an effect on what gets implemented in living streets. And that does overlap with another context, which is cost. We have to consider the fiscal context as well of these projects. And if, if certain things become cost prohibitive, or if we're not taking, if we're, if we're working on our neighborhood reconstruction projects and for cost reasons, our utility, Stormwater Utility Fund pays for curb and gutter. And if we leave curb and gutter, majority of it in a, in a street, well, then we may not be able to narrow that street at that time. This is, it's, it's a juggling act. We have to balance all these different contexts and, and, and looking at these different types of streets. Community engagement is also a vital component of living streets. We are committed to identify, reach out to, and engage stakeholders in this process. And so this chapter outlines those opportunities and makes it very clear where those opportunities will be to reach out to residents and build upon the existing outreach efforts that we do now around our neighborhood reconstruction process. Talks about the purpose of engagement. We realize that stakeholders can have a very positive effect on a project by identifying what may be previously unidentified problems or issues in a neighborhood. They, after all, they know their neighborhood best, and there are things that they see that we may not see. We outline the project stakeholder engagement process and defining how the city will work with residents and how residents can have an opportunity through this process I'm describing to potentially affect recommendations. We look at communication and outreach efforts through the street reconstruction process. The plan outlines the typical timeline of, of how outreach is, is initiated and carried through. And then also looking at different opportunities for public engagement outside of the process, public hearings, meeting with, with our representatives on, on-site construction, city council boards and commissions, et cetera. The design guidelines, what, what I've called the meat of the, of the plan, has been presented to, to all of you before, and they've been revised slightly, but generally they are divided up as follows. So these, these design guidelines start off with a section on vehicular facilities, look, looking at the character of driving lanes and how they function with parking lanes and, and how they may function and, and relate to different types of streets and living streets projects. And then also pavement markings and signage. And there's a graph that's shown on the table here, again, looking at some of those desired minimum widths for different types of roadway vehicular lanes. Next section deals with pedestrian facilities. We've talked about these quite a bit, starting with sidewalks, looking at the desired width of sidewalks. We look at five-foot sidewalks. Our standard is a five-foot boulevard. We know that sometimes that can vary due to some of the context and constraints that I've already discussed. It also has a section on pedestrian crossings, a preference for marked crosswalks. We have, we do have standards at the city for different types of marked crosswalks, curb extensions, street furniture and public art. Bicycle facilities really incorporates, we have a very thorough bicycle plan that was adopted as part of our last comprehensive plan update. And so it talks about the different types of bike facilities, and they're listed here in, in order of essentially separation of bicyclists from, from vehicles. So starting everywhere from, from shared-the-road facilities to bike lanes, buffer bike lanes, shared use paths, and this is broken down in this chart, showing how each facility may be applicable to each Living Streets Classification Type. That same system is also used when looking at the design guidelines for traffic calming. I think we have about a dozen different traffic calming measures currently in the plan that are highlighted. And again, those, those measures are, are indicated in the chart and where they may be most applicable for different types of roadways. And a section on stormwater management and sustainable infrastructure, covering everything from rain gardens to pervious pavement, and that section dealing with more of the green and blue infrastructure of the city and, and the desire to incorporate those elements into our plans. And that's what I have tonight. I'd like to open up to questions before the public.
Questions for Mr. Nolan.
Looks great.
Yeah, thanks for that thorough update. All right. The adoption of the Living Streets Plan wouldn't necessarily require a, a public hearing this evening, but we wanted to give our residents another chance to, to weigh on, in on this, this plan that we've been working on for a couple of years. So I'm going to open this matter up for public testimony. Mr. Nolan's going to sit down for the time being. If there's anyone that wishes to come forward and, and comment regarding the proposed plan, feel free to do so. And we welcome your comments.
I'll start off. I'm Arnie Bigby. I live at 7621 Edinburgh Way. For six years ending this past February, I was on the Human Rights Commission, and I did take the opportunity to sit in on many of the meetings of the Living Streets Advisory Group. And I think a lot of people would think that that group and the, the output, all the pretty pictures, it's what we're going to see, what it's going to look like. But I think the most important thing that's coming out of this Living Streets Plan is really what it's going to provide for people in terms of a possibility. A lot of people who live in Edina today maybe don't want to have two cars, and they'd like to be able to get around in this community in ways that are easy, and as Mark has pointed out in this plan here. Especially in light of what the council has taken on as an emerging commitment for affordable housing. It means that these other mechanisms, the sidewalks, the, the bike lanes, the transit opportunities are going to be very important. You know, several years ago, I, I'd say to Scott, it's really terrible when I see people on France Avenue in a snowstorm, standing in the street during rush hour, a, a real danger to themselves because there wasn't a sidewalk at the sign where it said bus stop. And the snow was plowed up so deep they couldn't get there. So we made big strides in that. I see now there's some solar-powered crosswalk signs going in on York Avenue, which is really great for places with senior citizens. So I think it's all really good, but it's what it's going to make possible for people in a changing environment in the future. And thanks for all the work you're doing in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Bigby.
Good evening.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Diane Rice, and I live at 5013 Bruce Avenue. And I am here with other members, raise your hands, ladies and gentlemen, of both Bruce Avenue South and Bruce Place. Our road is right smack dab in the middle of all of this construction at the moment, all of the big trucks going. And I'd say we were all very pleased with the thought that our road was going to be redone. New pipes is wonderful, and new surfacing is wonderful. We were, many of us have been to the Living Streets hearings, hoping that those of us who live on the street would be heard. We were told that our street, which is a beautiful street, we have many, many lovely large trees right at the street level. We take care of those trees. And we have lots of people that have been living there for 45 years and on. We have people, we have lots of new families. We have a very walkable street. Most of the people that are here today walk it daily, lots of biking, lots of kids playing in the street. It's an ideal street. So we were very disturbed, distressed, frustrated, when we were told that our street was being narrowed to 27 feet. That's something that, again, we went to these meetings and said, please, this is not what we want. This is, our street is not like 50th Bruce Avenue from 50th to Sunnyside. It's not a straight, flat road. It, if you go down it, it curves down a hill to Arden. We also have an island that's at the top of Bruce Place. Bruce Place also curves and goes down into the cul-de-sac. So minimizing that space, I know that there's been great concern about fire trucks getting into the cul-de-sac. We had a fire in the cul-de-sac, and it was a great concern. I think that the fire department has mentioned that they're not crazy about the 27-inch or foot restriction. I called and I spoke with Mark Nolan about this, and he said, you know, that part's a done deal. So again, decisions were made for us, and we were living on the street without a whole lot of respect to those who are living on the street. He also mentioned at the time that there's now going to be parking on one side with signs, the parking would be on the east side with signs on the west side. Currently, we have...
Ms. Rice, I need to have you wrap up. You're at the three-minute mark.
Okay.
Sorry.
Basically, what Mark suggested is that we put together a petition for people who are against having the parking on only one side, and Joni will talk about that.
Okay. We'll, we'll talk about these things in a moment here, but thank you.
Hi, I'm Joni Mitchell, and my husband David and I have lived on Bruce Avenue since 1989. We were raised in Edina, and so we're longtime residents. And we chose Bruce Avenue because it is a meandering, beautiful street. It's very quaint and charming. Half of the houses back up to the creek and down around the cul-de-sac, and it's, it swings down towards Arden Avenue. It is lovely. The only, and we are in the midst, like Diane said, of this process. The process is quite interesting, but we are very, very excited about the end result with this one issue of the parking on one side of the street and signs on the other. I've talked with 27 of the 30 active households on our street. There are four others, and I couldn't talk with them. One was involved with the fire. One is vacant because they've moved. It's, and one is being totally remodeled. So out of the 30 that I could reach, I reached 27. All of them signed this, merely asking that since it is a 27-foot street, that does allow parking on both sides then, is my understanding, that we eliminate the signs and just let the street go on as it has right now. We don't want the signs, they're going to clutter up the beauty of the street. It also creates a situation where the parking was going to be on the east side. So most of the traffic that comes in off 50th would have to go into people's driveways or go down around the cul-de-sac and turn around and come back to park on the east side of the street. It doesn't make sense. And we're, this, we're also a street that has art fair parking, and we are very well aware of how difficult it is when there's numerous cars parking on one side of the street to try and get out of our driveways safely. So this is the petition. We very much would like you to consider it completely, and actually, you'll be saving money because you won't have to buy signs and install them on our street. So we'd like that, again, we'd really like to have the parking be left open for both sides and maintain the beauty of Bruce Avenue. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Mitchell. We'll take it. Anyone else?
If it's on the same topic. My name is Carol Kushmar. I live at 5012 Bruce Avenue. I live across the street from Diane Rice and from Joni Mitchell. They brought up the, the primary issue that we have, which is the placement of signs that would be necessary to be, and would be put on our front lawns. So this is the main issue, and this is why I am here, and this is why most of the neighbors here are very concerned, and why 27 out of the 30 households signed the petition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Pat Lawrence. I live at 5015 Bruce Avenue. And I just want to say quickly that I have lived there for 43 years. It's a charming street. Everything about it is lovely. We, I've raised a family of grandchildren. We've never, ever had an accident. This isn't a safety issue. It's just a matter of changing something that doesn't need to be changed. It's so lovely the way it is, and to do something that is unnecessary and is going to cost more money, we just, we're just puzzled. None of us on it, on the street want this. We're wondering why others are telling us that something's going to be changed that, that we don't want. So I'm just here, as the others are, to say, why are you doing something that we don't want, that's not going to change the, the street in any, in any way to, to enhance it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence.
My name is Carrie Schelling. I live at 5017 Bruce. I don't believe there is a parking problem on our street. I think that restricting parking to one side would just litter our neighborhood with no parking signs, simply not necessary. It's also my understanding that there are many other 27-foot streets that do not have restricted parking, and I'm not aware of any petitions from the residents that have requested the restricted parking. So I'm asking that we leave our street as 27 feet. You can park on either side. I walked it at 6:00 this morning. I'll be there again tomorrow if you'd like to walk it with me. Thank you.
My name is Chris Bremer. I live at 6001 Ewing Avenue South in Strackhour Park neighborhood, and I'm here to speak in support of the Living Streets Plan. Strackhour Park is a changing neighborhood. We have a mix of older, more affordable homes, as well as some new, larger homes. And both types of housing are attracting, attract families with younger children, and it seems like the number of children in our neighborhood has doubled in the last decade. And if you visit our neighborhood, you'd see many people walking, a lot of bicyclists. And on a rainy day, you'd see standing water in some places where it's problematic. We also have a park that's mostly athletic fields, but has unused land adjoining Highway 62. So I'm excited about the Living Streets Plan. The streets in Strackhour A were reconstructed last year under the old rules, and they look pretty ordinary, and they're still kind of wide, uninteresting places, though they have been reconstructed and they're easier to drive on. But in, but next year, Strackhour B will be, Strackhour A will be constructed, sorry, Strackhour B was, was, was done. So next year, Strackhour A will be reconstructed. And this seems like a great opportunity to implement living streets and see how it makes a difference in a neighborhood. I support having narrower streets because it will slow traffic. We have a lot of fast traffic going to our park for soccer games. It'll improve safety and provide more, space for more trees and other landscaping. We support, I support the design guidelines as written, as they would apply to our neighborhood, and the language about context sensitivity as well. I'm also excited about the potential role of the language that's in the Living Streets Plan to address stormwater issues in our neighborhood, because we could certainly use some rain gardens, not only in areas where we have standing water issues, but also in our neighborhood park, which would also enhance the, actually a rather boring park. So, so for lots of reasons, we think, I like the Living Streets Plan, and I just wanted to, to come and express my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bremer.
My name is Pat Olson. I live at 5002 Bruce. I'm probably the oldest person on that street, and I've lived there the longest since 1965. Raised our kids there. It's a beautiful street. I think it's unique. And I don't want it changed, and I want us to be able to park on both sides of the street. I think it's a safe street. I walk it all the time. My kids walked it. And I just don't, I don't see the common sense of having the parking on one side and, and having the signs to destroy the beauty of the street. parking on one side and having the signs to destroy the beauty of the street, and I'm just asking you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Anyone else wish to comment on the proposed adoption of the Living Streets Plan?
Hello, John Hamilton, 6125 Beard Avenue South. As Chris said, we're scheduled for new streets at Strackhour Park in next year, in '16, and we've had the good fortune of working with Chad and Mark and Patrick in engineering in thinking about what the Living Streets Guidelines can do to make those streets new and different, and we're really excited about it. I just, my hat's off to the forward-thinking planning that's going into it. I just got new tires for my car. Getting new tires for your car must be the most boring expense in the Western world, probably right behind getting new streets that look exactly the way they looked in 1955. To think that we have the idea to do some innovative, thoughtful things in a global warming situation, to look at groundwater, to look at reducing pavement, my hat's off. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Anyone else?
Make motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to second to close the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Carried.
I'll move approval of the Living Streets Plan.
Second.
Second. All right, we got a motion to second to approve the Living Streets Plan. I'll comment on the conversation from the folks from Bruce, and I may have Director Milner weigh in just briefly on it, but we went through a, well, let's continue this discussion because the conversation with the folks from Bruce has little to do, I think, with the Living Streets Plan adoption, because we already made decisions over in that neighborhood last winter as to what the street was going to look like, and I'll tell you a little bit about that in a minute. All right, so we got a Living Streets Plan proposed in front of us. We got a motion to second, discussion from council. Member Staunton?
Mr. Mayor, I want to compliment Mr. Nolan and the Living Streets Advisory Group, as well as the Transportation Commission. I think a lot of work has gone into this. I think it's a very nice product. Obviously, you started with the policy. Now the plan brings more detail to it. As I read through it, there were a couple of things, and I actually think that the folks on Bruce who testified tonight are a good illustration of things that I hope we do in the future, that, you know, I was really pleased to see the discussion of context and the discussion of flexibility in the plan, that this isn't really a one-size-fits-all, that we're thinking about each project as they go along. The second thing that I think is really important is the public engagement and the commitment in the plan to early public engagement. My new experience on the council with street projects is that I'm coming to the conclusion the very worst time to be making changes is right at the last minute, once the deal has already been working its way through the system for, in some cases, up to two years. And so, you know, my advice would be to staff, as we're implementing this, that you take the notion of context and flexibility seriously, because it's really hard for us at the council when it's all the way down the tracks and it gets to us at the last minute. It's difficult for us to kind of back out of that. Now, we'll do it if we have to, but I encourage you to take seriously that context conversation. The other thing I would suggest is that it's a Living Streets Plan, but it's also a living document, and I would hope that over time we'll learn lessons, and I think the streetscape lesson on Bruce is one that we ought to be thinking about, and I know even on that street, we've got, you know, the possibility of some changes on that in the future, but we should, every time we do one of these, we ought to learn something from it, and if it makes sense to be changing the plan as we move forward, we ought to consider that. So I just throw those comments out. On the whole, I'm supportive of it. I think it's terrific. As Mr. Bigby said, it creates possibilities, and that's a really good thing, and I just hope that we treat it flexibly and we really live up to the context commitment that we've made. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Stewart?
I concur. I think you guys have done just a tremendous amount of work to come up with a plan that I think will have great long-term dividends for the city of Edina and everybody who lives here. So thank you for all of that work. Thank you for the thoughtful output. I concur with Member Staunton's suggestions about taking some of those suggestions seriously about being flexible and when appropriate. So I support it. Thank you.
Member Swenson?
Today was Bike to School Day at Concord in Southview, and all the kids were in the bike lane on Wooddale Avenue, which was a lot of work for Mary and Jim and I before you two came on, but it made me really happy to see them all biking. Some had their dads with them and moms, and some were on their own, but we actually had a bike lane for them. They had a little bit more trouble getting home because I actually drove down Wooddale again when they were leaving, and we don't have a specific bike lane on the going north side. They have to share, so there was confusion as they tried to figure out whether they should go up onto the sidewalk to get around a parked car or to go into the street into what felt like oncoming traffic to them. But for the first time, I actually got to see them in the bike lane. That was pretty cool. I think this is great. I'm really supportive of this.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
Thank you, and a huge thank you to the members of the Transportation Commission and really all the commissions, because the Transportation Commission, the Living Streets Advisory Group took this around to all the other commissions and got input from planning, got input from energy and environment, from human rights relations, from health, and really valuable input that really helps to shape not just what our streets look like, but why. And so I think that's an important piece of this. So I shout out to everybody that your time and really commitment to make this plan something that we can get behind and be proud of. And Mark, your leadership in this, I don't know, I don't know how you do it all. I email you periodically about a variety of issues that I hear about. So thank you for what you do and your leadership on this. It's much appreciated, and I'm in full support.
In thinking about the future of our town, back in 2013 with the assistance of the Edina Transportation Commission, we adopted a Living Streets policy, and that policy required implementation of a plan, sort of embodying the principles in that policy. The folks over in the Bruce Avenue neighborhood south of 50th, that project was discussed in the context of the policy and that the plan would be coming. And at least one of the residents that was here tonight was part of that whole public input process, where we had actually quite lively debate in the council, me being in the minority position, frankly, with respect to street width, with respect to parking on one side of the street, with respect to signage on the street, directing where parking was going to take place, with respect to the width of the, or the dimension on the island at Bruce Place and Bruce, with respect to the dimension of the cul-de-sac down into Bruce Place, with respect to the width of the street in Bruce Place. And this council decided that after all of that input from neighbors that were here for those public hearings and those neighborhood meetings that you held in advance, probably over a one- to two-year period, that we were going to advance this proposition. Now, I may have felt a little bit like some of you, and Member Stewart and Member Staunton were down at the council at the time, but this council did go forward with her recommendation that we employ the elements of the policy that were now embodied in the plan on the Bruce Avenue project. So whether this council would go back and revisit the parking on both sides of the street or the signage issues, I don't have a sense of that. We appreciate that you've brought these issues forward to us again, but there was a big bite at the apple to be had when we had the public hearings on the roadway project itself, and other than Mr. Schelling, I don't recall, yeah, Ms. Rice, many of you being here. And Mr. Schelling and I have had several conversations about it, and I tried to work on some of these things, but to do something consistent with the Living Streets policy is what was done in the Bruce neighborhood, and we'll just have to have a conversation amongst the council as to whether they want to revisit any elements of that with respect to parking on both sides of the street or the signage issues that are involved, because I think there was sensitivity to that issue. So we'll just have to talk about that at some point in the near future as this project is underway. Okay, those are my comments. Again, I would say, to echo the comments of my colleagues, this is one of those documents that's going to live on for a long period of time and be important to the future of our town and the people that move in here when people start looking around for places to live, and they see the kinds of things that we're doing to accommodate the kind of lifestyle that they want. This is going to be a very, very important element of that. We've already heard that from some of the millennials that have told us that they've moved into our town because we've got a sidewalk plan, we've got a bicycle plan, and they're very conscious of that, and they're making decisions based upon what communities are doing in that regard with respect to non-motorized transportation. So again, to echo my colleagues, thanks to you, thanks to everybody on the Edina Transportation Commission, quite a fine piece of work. So we've got a plan in front of us. We need a favorable majority vote of the council. All those in favor of adopting the Living Streets Plan, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Carried. All right, that concludes the public hearing portion of the agenda. Community comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council with respect to an issue that wasn't otherwise on the agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, small point of interest. Edina apparently was featured on Jeopardy recently. Mr. Milner, do you have the question? Okay. Apparently, the question from Alex Trebek was something along the lines of, these were not in place when cities like Edina, Minnesota had a widening obesity problem or something. The answer, or the question, was sidewalks. What are sidewalks? So I didn't happen to see the show, but I heard about it from some friends.
It was on on Monday, the 20th of April. I haven't seen it, but some friends of ours were in California when that episode was taped, so they were there and clued us into the question, so.
All right. I've seen no one coming forward. Community comment. We'll move on to reports and recommendations portion of the agenda.
There's a question.
We've got Mr. Nolan again for the 2014 Pedestrian Cyclists Safety Fund Summary Report update.
Thank you once again, Mayor, council members. This presentation is, well, let me start off by saying it was initiated by a memorandum that I had produced for City Manager Neil when we were looking at the pedestrian cyclist safety fund usage for last year and how much of it may have been focused on construction, et cetera, et cetera, and we thought it'd be a very good idea to present that to council as well, and I'd like to say that this is something that staff anticipates doing on a year-by-year basis. 2014 was the first full year for the pedestrian cyclist safety fund, so that is why we're sharing that with you right now. Just for a quick overview about that fund, it was approved by council in December of 2012. The revenue for the fund is generated by franchise fees paid by customers of CenterPoint and Excel Energy and generates just over $1.1 million a year to be used exclusively for improvements to the non-motorized transportation infrastructure network, both construction and maintenance, and then projects and initiatives related to that. And there is a stated bias in that policy towards construction, and as I stated, 2014 was the first full year of that fund. So in 2014, there was over $1.6 million available in the pedestrian cyclist safety fund. That is because there was a $500,000 rollover from the prior year. So when the monies in this fund aren't used, it rolls over into the next year and can be used in the next year. Actually, staff doesn't just anticipate. There is about three-quarters of a million dollars has rolled over from 2014 to 2015, so we have many more funds available in 2015. Now, staff anticipates that these rollovers will decrease over time as we, efficiencies and management of the funds increase, and then also with the sidewalk facilities map in place and the Living Streets Plan, this helps staff enable to not just look at what projects to implement, but also enables us to budget as we move into the future, and actually, that larger sum of money in 2015, we're projecting to use just about all of it this year. We have many, many funds or projects to talk about next year. But as you can see on the chart in front of you, $812,000 was spent on PACs projects in 2014, and over 93% of those projects were related to construction. Two-thirds of all of those funds were spent on sidewalks alone. You can see in the chart, other construction projects, bike facilities, actuated beacon crossings that we have installed, about $100,000 of improvements, pedestrian improvements, the 50th and France ramps, some lighting improvements, again, equal just over three-quarters of a million dollar, with the remainder coming from thermoplastic supplies that we purchased in order for us to install new crosswalks, and then also some of the equipment that helps with that, and then other consulting and other items make up for that balance. Just quickly, some examples of some of the projects that we constructed last year using this fund. They are geographically diverse in terms of where they are in the city. We got a couple here in the northeast quadrant, examples of the 42nd Street sidewalk that has been discussed for many years was implemented this past year, 62nd Street sidewalk adjacent to Strackhour Park. Two more examples in the northwest quadrant, sidewalk on Vernon Avenue near Ayrshire, and then also the Olinger Boulevard bike facility that was installed last year when we did a mill and overlay of that street. In the southwest quadrant, a new sidewalk making a connection to a primary crosswalk at the high school and Valley View Road, and then also we're placing the green conflict lane that is at West 70th and Metro Boulevard, which previously had been painted and had to be repainted each and every year. Now we have a much durable, much more durable material. And then two more examples in the southeast quadrant, again, the 66th Street pedestrian crossings. We have two of those located near the park, and then also York Avenue sidewalk where we worked with Southdale to get that project constructed. And that's my brief presentation.
Questions for Mr. Nolan or comments regarding the use of the PAC funds in 2014? It looks like you've got a carryover amount into 2015.
That's right. About three-quarters of a million dollars. So that fund will be about 1.8 million for 2015. So we have a very long list of projects this year that we're looking at.
I really appreciate this report because I really wanted to know where we...
Warren, you make me feel really good about how you spend money.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Well said. Other comments?
Nope.
No?
Thank you.
Very helpful. Thank you. All right. Next matter before us is Resolution 2015-46, Accepting Various Grants and Donations.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion to second to adopt a resolution. Discussion. All those in favor of adopting the resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Carried. This reporting period, Edina Park and Rec got a nice $500 grant from Dorothy D. Pasquale, and it was a crab apple tree for Roslin Park, a memorial for Chase Johnson, and then the Edina Police Department, Crime Prevention Fund, two generous gifts there for SWAT helmets and motorcycle emergency equipment totaling over $20,000 for those two categories. Member Brindle?
Thank you.
Who sits on the crime fund?
Yes, I'm a member of the Edina Crime Prevention Fund, and we now have two Edina police motorcycles, and they are made available by Harley-Davidson for a lease per year of $1. So what we need to do as a department is outfit those vehicles to be used as police vehicles, so that's what this gift provides, one of the gifts provides, and the other are replacements... And the other are replacements, SWAT helmets for the SWAT team. So thanks to the crime fund, which is a collection pot of donations from corporate sponsors as well as residents, and certainly most of the donations are from residents around our city.
Thanks for that detailed report. All those in favor of adopting the resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Carried. And then, next matter in front of us, in the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, is Resolution 2015-47, which deals with accepting three life-size bronze And Susan Faust has this matter, along with Tom Shirley, it looks like.
Approximately one year ago, members of Public Art Edina and former Northwest Airlines employees met to talk about putting sculptures in Centennial Lakes Park. The proposal we have here tonight is the culmination of all their efforts. In general, the sculptures are donated by former Northwest Airlines employees through the Edina Community Foundation. The artwork is created by Edina sculptor Nick Legarres. Nick's with us tonight. A lot of us might be familiar with Nick through his art in Grandview, the promenade up at 50th and France, and throughout the metro area here. So we feel quite happy to have someone of his caliber to be donating sculptures like this and working on these, so. Sculptures are low maintenance, they're very durable and suitable for a public park environment, and they have a value of approximately $135,000. The three bronze sculptures that you see there, two of them are set to be installed probably in June. The third, larger sculpture, would be created this summer and then installed this fall. We're looking at installation location in the north park of Centennial Lakes. The east side, the larger sculpture would go down on a granite pathway, the chip path, lower level. The others approximately 30 yards away in some wavy grass areas. And with that, we'll open up the questions.
Mr. Legarres, you want to step forward and maybe set those on the middle table there? I think we can get some coverage of those models that you have with you, so folks, both here and at home, can see the proposed sculptures. How large will the sculptures be, Mr. Legarres?
All the figures are life-size, and the base that this family group is standing out is about 11 and 1/2 feet wide.
All right, we did some very nice work there. Is Mr. Horn here?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Horn, thank you. I want to make sure we recognize you for, at least I would think, the originator of this idea, as I recall from a couple of years ago with the Community Foundation and visiting with Dick Crockett. And I want to personally thank you for undertaking this on behalf of your former employer. Feel free to step up to the podium and comment, identify yourself and give us your address.
It's important for you to note that these are not for me, these are from the employees of Northwest Airlines.
No, I understand that, but somebody had to start, somebody had to have the idea and start the process.
And they are to remember the airline and to remember Don Nyrop, our mentor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Horn. Other questions, comments? Member Swinson?
I'm pretty excited about these because I love your art, but I also like, Tom, where we're going to be putting them on the promenade, and they're going to be on the east side, the, kind of, in front of the, can you describe their positioning so people can start looking for them when?
Sure. These will actually not be in the promenade. These won't be in the promenade, they'll be on the north side of the park.
Oh, like, yeah.
Down below.
Along the trail. I call the trail the promenade, so, sorry about that.
Oh, sure, yeah.
The whole thing, to me, is the promenade, so.
Sure. Right where the granite chip path on the east side there splits and starts going down on the north side.
Sure.
We'll have, the two smaller sculptures will be in the grasses there, the third larger one will be a little farther down in a little peony bed that we have there.
It's a great location. You know, the pine cone is a little south of that, correct?
Correct.
So I think where you're situating them are going to be great.
Yeah.
And I look forward to being there for the unveiling in June and then the later one. So, John, I want to thank you for organizing this. I know it is all the employees, but it took the spark from you, and we really appreciate that. And we're very lucky to have people like that. We try to fund art in our city, and it's not always easy. I will tell a little later about a GoFundMe site I have for a hockey player right now, a sculpture that I'm working on, actually with the idea of Bill Nyrop Don's son. So it's exciting to have someone step forward and do what you did. It's not an easy thing to do, so I'd like to thank you personally.
Anything else?
I'd echo all the comments that have been made thus far.
My wife, yeah, Member Brindle, go ahead.
I want to bring up Nancy Nyrop Shearer, former member of the Planning Commission, daughter of Donald Nyrop. And I know that she knows about this, and I'm sure her family is very touched and thrilled that this is going to happen. And, you know, I moved into Edina in 1985, so I can't claim that I carried the banner of being here all my life. But the Nyrop family is, they have a legacy in Edina, and they are forever tied to Northwest Airlines. So seeing this is just going to be a thrill for people, whether they know the family or not.
Mr. Horn.
Can I add one last comment? And that would be, mark August 23rd on your calendar.
Okay.
Because I hope that on that day, we're going to have a Northwest reunion in the park to celebrate these sculptures.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Legarres, the only other comment I had was, my wife showed me an article in the paper the other day from News of the Weird where somebody had created this horrific rendition of Lucille Ball in some park out in the east coast, and maybe they should have your name and number so they could, they could get that right. The sculptor offered to fix it, but of course, they weren't going to have any of that.
Well, I'd like to.
Anyway, you're doing beautiful work for the group of folks that funded this and for our community. Thank you very much, and thanks for being part of our community as well.
I'd like to make the official motion for this resolution accepting these three life-size bronze sculptures.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution 2015, which accepts three life-size bronze sculptures through a restricted donation and agreement. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay? Carried. Thank you, everybody. Next matter in this portion of the agenda is Resolution 2015-48, which is potential support by the city to assist an affordable housing project that was earlier approved by us at 3330 West 66th Street. And Mr. Nundorf, you have this matter.
Yes, good evening. Resolution this evening is 2015-48, and it is recommending support for affordably-priced housing located at 3330 West 66th. This is the 66 West apartment project that the city has talked about for several months, maybe more than a year at this point. This is the project that, when complete, will consist of 39 efficiency apartments that are targeted as affordably-priced housing for teenagers and young adults who are formerly homeless. For projects like this, there's a variety of funding sources that are necessary to actually make them work and make them buildable and sustainable. The construction cost for this is over $10 million, about $10 and 1/2 million. And even with financial support from a number of agencies and groups and local residents, a financial gap is still anticipated for this project. The developer, Beacon Interfaith Housing, has approached the city a few months back requesting that we help plug that gap to make the project whole and to make it viable. So the city council was informed of their request back in January. Staff initially did some initial exploring on ways that we could be of assistance, things to explore. And back in April, April 7th, at our work session, there was conversation and additional direction from the body this evening to explore the use of TIF. In 2012, the city created the Southdale Two TIF District, and last year, the city was successful in getting special legislation that would allow us to use some of those incremental tax dollars to fund projects like this, projects that deliver affordably-priced housing within the city of Edina. So we've worked with our consultants, our legal team at Dorsey and Whitney, our financial consultants at Ellers Associates, to investigate the use of TIF, and we found that it is a viable source. In the Southdale TIF District, over the life of that TIF, that's about an eight-year life, will collect just over $12 million. That will be more than enough to repay the TIF loan for Southdale and still have some monies left over to fund projects like this. So staff recommends that we move forward and issue a pledge to work with the developer and award them up to $550,000 towards their project. We still have to go through all the legal requirements of public hearings and additional meetings to actually create the TIF district and negotiate a legal contract, but the action that we're requesting here tonight is to show a sign of good faith so that as the developer reaches out to other funding sources, they'd know that they'd have the support from the city moving forward. So staff definitely recommends this, we think it's a good investment, we think it satisfies many of our goals here in the city. I'm available for any questions. Also this evening, I have Ann Mavady with the developer, and also Nick Anhut from Ellers, if there's any questions related to the project.
Mr. Nundorf, you characterize this as a pledge, and I think it would be important for people to understand the extent of the pledge and the possible rescission of the pledge under certain circumstances. Why don't you explain that as well?
Sure, sure. With projects like this, I believe there's 12 different financial sources, 11 or 12 different financial sources, and it takes time to get the commitments from all those different groups. If the city moves ahead and makes a pledge tonight, we still reserve the right to withdraw that pledge if the developer is not successful in getting the rest of the monies in a timely fashion. With the state laws written the way they are, we need to make some prompt choices on how we would invest these TIF dollars. So we have until 2017 to use those monies. So we've worked with the developer. If they are not able to fully fund their project by the end of 2016, then the city's pledge would go away so that we could support a different project.
All right. Questions for Mr. Nundorf? Member Stewart?
Mr. Nundorf, the last time, the last time this was brought before us, the dollar amount suggested was half a million dollars, now it's 550,000. Why the $50,000 increase?
Right. Great question. So according to the city's TIF policy, the costs of creating a TIF district, legal costs of negotiating contracts are not borne by the city but borne by the developer. So in this case, we've estimated those costs to be about $50,000. We think that's on the high side, this should be a relatively simple procedure, but yet it would be monies that are incurred by the project, not by the city.
So the intention is for the project to net half a million?
That's correct.
I think you might also comment, Mr. Nundorf, on the leverage that this potential TIF funding would provide to this project from other funding sources.
This is, the request for about half a million dollars, while a significant amount of money, is about 5% of the construction budget. And it's interesting, when you compare the city's potential investment with all the other funders that are going to be on board, for every $1 of TIF money that we invest, we potentially yield $18 of investment from other groups. So that's a very good return for a TIF investment. When it comes to affordably-priced housing units, oftentimes for major projects, you're looking at investments in the hundreds of thousands of dollars per unit. In this case, since we're only contributing a relatively small amount of their budget, our investment is about $14,000 per unit. So our cost to actually deliver units and have them be delivered is relatively low. So those are both very good measures.
Other questions for Mr. Nundorf or Ms. Mavady?
I don't think so.
Yep.
Member Swinson, comment?
I'm supportive of this, but I think the one thing that we do have to keep in mind, we've gotten a lot of letters of support from people and everything like that, is that, you know, when we designate this kind of money, it means that we're not going to do something else. And $550,000 is almost, you know, 3% increase in our budget if we had to take it out of our budget. Luckily, we already have this money and we don't. So it's not like, you know, I get letters from people all the time that say this is the right thing to do and it's a good project and everything, and I agree with that. But every time you spend money for something, you take it out of something else. So I think we have to understand that it is an important decision and that, you know, it's a good thing to do, but it means that it's not there for something else.
And it's not there for something else that's affordable housing-related?
Right.
Because this fund that we created in the Southdale Two TIF District is for affordable housing?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And if it didn't get used for this, that money availability would expire. I'm not suggesting just because it's available, we should spend it, but it wouldn't be available after some relatively short additional period of time.
Right. Now, I, okay. All right. I found what I was looking for in the body of the resolution. I was looking for that conditional sort of approval language on the pledge, and that's embodied in the last resolution clause.
Correct.
Okay. Anyone care to make a motion on this matter?
So moved.
So moved, second.
We got a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution 2015-48, which would be our pledge from the city of Edina to support this affordably-priced housing project at 3330 West 66th Street, known as the Beacon Interfaith Project. Any further discussion? Member Staunton?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to comment that we did get a chance to see this in a work session. I appreciate the applicant coming and answering a lot of pointed and detailed questions from us, and I think it's appropriate that we ask those kinds of questions when we're talking about, you know, this kind of sum of money. I am persuaded that it's, that this is a good idea, primarily because I was persuaded from that conversation that the money will actually materialize from this TIF district, so I'm confident that that's where it's going to be, that's the source of it. Secondly, that we have a very good security provision in this, that we're not going to spend the money unless everybody else is in as well. And finally, the point that Mr. Nundorf made about bang for the buck. I mean, we have some goals for affordably-priced housing in this community, and this permits us at about $14,000 per unit to be able to accomplish 39 additional units. So I think it's, I think it's on the whole a good move, and I'm supportive, and we'll vote in favor.
Any other comments?
I concur with Member Staunton's comments. I'd just like to add to that, I do feel that we have some additional work to do as a council or staff and council working together to figure out a greater context in which we can address affordable housing issues. As Member Staunton said, I too am persuaded that the bang for the buck, the $14,000 per unit is attractive enough for us to go forward with this, so I too am supportive.
Thank you, Member Stewart. Member Brindle?
And I am in support of this, and I appreciate the letters we've received from, I don't know how many people. A lot. We haven't gotten one critical of this. Every one of them has been in support. And if there's someone out there who is unfamiliar with Beacon, you can quickly become familiar with Beacon. They have Nicollet Square at 38th and Nicollet, and they're more than willing to be accommodating and take people on a tour if you'd like to see what a residence like 66 West is going to look like. And it is, it's impressive. These young people pay rent, they are on a track to move on and be successful, and that's, that is what the hope is here as well.
Thank you, Member Brindle. I think you raised an important point here, and that is that... I think you raised an important point here, and that is that some people may not expect this of Edina, but the breadth of the support through our community for this project was just astounding. Built through the various denominations in the faith community, it was this resounding amount of support that I don't think you see in a lot of communities, and I think there was some recognition of that at the time we approved this project, and this is just another affirmation of the beliefs that our town has through our people and our council in affordable housing. So let's vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2015-48, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Thanks for hanging in there with us. On the main part of the agenda this evening, we have one remaining item which will be very interesting. We've got the report out on the work of the Southdale-France Working Group, an update for us. All right. Former Planning Commissioner Schroeder is with us this evening, and various members of the task force that have been working on these issues relative to potential adoption of some principles that we should be following and looking at project development along the France Avenue corridor in Southdale. So, Commissioner Schroeder, welcome.
Mayor, Council? Thank you. Actually, with me tonight, I'm not the only person here from the work group. I think I'm just the one who was selected to speak. Jim Nelson, Lori Severson, Harvey Attorney Julie Chamberlain, Rob Grooman, and Peter Fitzgerald is somewhere here also. So I'm going to try and make this brief. I know what time it is, but it's important that you know this is an update. We're not done with our work. We still have work left to do. So I'll run through this very quickly. We're going to talk about where we are in the Stage One effort. If you remember, we talked about four stages. We'll talk briefly about the meetings that we've had, the dialogue that we've had with the work group, the directions that we have to date, and the schedule we have for the remainder of Stage One. This is what we talked about probably about a month and a half ago, and if you look in the first column in kind of the purple zone, that's where we are in Stage One, and we imagine this to be a longer process eventually, but we talked about not moving on until we've actually had a chance to check in with the community, and we have done a little bit of that, and also come back to the Planning Commission and City Council for, at a decision point. We kind of expanded that Stage One to show the number of meetings, and we've actually even had, I think, more meetings than we anticipated here as we try and work through this process. The first thing we had was a kickoff meeting, and it was a pretty vibrant discussion, not only around the issues, but in terms of how we selected the work group, and it actually ended up being defined exactly the way the City Council directed. And this is the body of the work group here. You'll note that there are 12 members, and there were six members of that work group defined at the kickoff meeting, three from the neighborhood and three commercial property owner, business owner interests. I will note one thing about this, and I don't actually know how many meetings we've had, but once the work group was formed, we might have had seven or eight meetings so far. We have had one member miss one meeting. Otherwise, every person has been at every meeting. We've had several other meetings, kind of as a subgroup to try and work through things. So this is a very committed group of people, and the group wanted me to make certain that, as I spoke to you about what's going on, that even during the first meeting, I think it was actually Jim, noted that while there seemed to be some divisiveness or potential divisiveness at the check-in meeting, trying to wrestle between how many members the neighbor would have, neighborhood would have versus the business owners would have, it was recognized very early in our process that these were 12 people who are committed to the future of Edina. And in fact, as we moved through, we realized, as we have hoped for in this kind of a process, that we have lots of areas of agreement. We're just working very hard to define how we frame that agreement to allow processes in the Southdale area to move forward. We have kind of focused around a dialogue that spoke about the future of the study area. We talked about topics that are important to begin studying, and we've had this continuum exercise that we brought back to the check-in meeting where we started discussing extremes as trying to find a place where we might end up in the end. We have lots of ideas. We asked the group to define, we actually said we were going to do one-word descriptions of the future, and even this group can't stick to just one word. We allowed them hyphens, and they even went beyond hyphenated words. So we had lots of ideas about the future, kind of describing it would be. We narrowed it down to 14 different topics that might guide this, and we started putting it into these continuum discussions. And these were simply ways that we could begin to look at the range of possibilities. So we, there was no, knowing there was no right or wrong answer, and knowing that as we moved through this process, there's lots of gray we have to deal with before we can define a series of black and white principles to guide us. So we had groups working on defining these, kind of the disparate ends of these continuum around those 14 different points. We eventually brought that back to the check-in meeting, and we asked people at the check-in meeting to offer their thoughts about where they might be on these various issues. So if you look at kind of the range of ideas that were around height, you'll see dots and comments spread along the continuum. If we look at the, one of the opposites, talking about public spaces, and the words are kind of hard to read here, but you could see that the trend was actually moving in one direction. So we're trying to use these as a way to better understand where we have points of agreement, and eventually where we have points of disagreement around things like height, we'll be resolving those in terms of what we can agree on. What's interesting as we went through this, and we've talked about this as a work group, the kind of word that got us into, that really got us into this was around density, and I think as a work group, we've decided that we don't need to define density in terms of quantities. We can define it in terms of the qualities of so many other things we need to deal with in framing a direction for the Southdale area. We will eventually come back and talk more directly about density. We're not there yet, and we're at this point comfortable to say that density is embodied in all of these other character points that we're dealing with. The last thing that we've started to work on is this idea of a principles matrix, and they're not really principles yet, but it gets to the idea that as we look at along this continuum, there are roles that the public sector, public entities play, the private sectors play, and there's an interface between those. So we started out with this notion of give to get, and it was really an attempt, and this has probably been the focus of so much of our discussion during the work group. When we talk about the PUD tool that we have as a development possibility in the community, what we've never really landed on is what we're getting as a community out of that. And so when we look at all the possibilities, where we would give and flexibility for some of the standards, what we might want to get in return for that. We don't have a very comprehensive list here yet, but that really happens to the interface. There are, I think, probably 12 or 13 of these ideas in the principles matrix, and this is what we're in the process of distilling down to a series of principles now. This is the work group kind of scheduling events. We've scheduled another meeting for Monday night. I think we might have an idea of when we have a, coming back to the City Council and Planning Commission. But our goal was to bring this back at a work session so we could share this in a more of a dialogue with the City Council and Planning Commission. We don't know when that will happen. We don't want to stretch this out. We know that you have a lot of your time occupied already in your work sessions, but our schedule, as we laid it out for you at the beginning and it's changed a little bit, would have us coming back to the, a work session, then going to the Planning Commission and the City Council with any kind of refinements that we might have gained from the, for the work session. I would stop and let others, if they want to offer anything. Okay, they will be inexplicably quiet tonight, which is not what we normally have at our meetings. Rob wants to say something.
I would just offer that...
Mr. Grooman, would you come forward, please, so that we can get this recorded properly? Come up to one of the side podiums or get the handheld microphone from Mr. Schroeder?
Well, and I think, Michael...
And your name, please.
My name is Rob Grooman. I'm not a resident of Edina, but I'm on this commission. One of the things that we've talked about over and over again that I think we are all agreed upon is that it's as important to have a quantitative evaluation of development as it is to have a qualitative. And I was thinking about that tonight as we were talking about livable streets and how important it was to the city to have that element in terms of the qualitative and quality aspect of this community. We believe that development needs to be qualitative, excuse me, qualitative as much as it is quantitative, and we've talked a lot about that, and you'll see a lot of that theme through much of the work that we'll present to you later on, so.
Speaking of qualitative, I noticed the street lights are up. The two of you were instrumental in some of that work on France Avenue. We're now waiting for the fixtures to be installed, but the stanchions or whatever you want to call them.
I will tell you that Rob was the one who brought the idea forward, asking if we could have color-changing lights, and I don't know if Director Milner can talk to this, but I can tell you, I was asked on Monday of this week to help establish a series of 40, potentially 40 scenes for how the lights could work. And just to explain briefly how that works, if in fact the lights were up and operating, we could program it to have certain colors that would reflect the race for the cure that's happening on Sunday, we can set that up for any number of, up to 40 different sequences, and so that's what I'm working with staff and consultants to develop now.
Good. Other comments from any of the task force members? Harvey? Mr. Turner?
My name's Harvey Turner. I'm a resident of Edina.
Use that microphone to the side.
Harvey Turner, resident of Edina. I think one of the things that's really interesting and that really needs to be conveyed today is that residents of this community understand that in fact change is coming, and they don't necessarily oppose change. They want that to be quality change, and I think the thing that's happened, because we've always had public open meetings, so there have been people that have attended our meetings, sitting around the table every day. And the thing that's really interesting is that there appears to be a lot of agreement between people representing business interests in this community and residents in this community. And what those, what I would characterize as a single point of agreement is that this community wants to make decisions going forward that are based on knowledge, that are based on in fact what's in the best interest of the city of Edina and how do we best do that. And what we talked about is that we wanted to come up with a vision that's supported by principles. The vision is then articulated in a plan, and that plan is to be executed by this city after it in fact gets appropriate approval. And the two things that Rob said to us, which I think, again, everybody agrees with, is the fact that we want that to be crystal clear, and we want that to be consistently applied. And I think so, I think in response to what's going on among the 12 of us is there's a tremendous amount of agreement in terms of what Edina is going to face in the future and tremendous amount of, I think, eager and well-spirited support on both sides of what has appeared initially at some times to be a divisive group, residents on one hand and business community on the other. I'm not seeing that exist, not seeing that exist in terms of the kind of activity that we're having going on at the meetings, not necessarily seeing that exist in terms of, again, what might come out of this. I anticipate that there will be a lot of public support, and some of the negativity that we see or have seen in the recent past can go away if in fact we can create the vision. The vision informs the plan, if the plan is crystal clear, and if we have consistency in terms of applying that vision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Okay. Thanks, folks. Thanks for serving. We appreciate it. We've got a lot of confidence in this group that'll, you know, to give the council some good guidance here. Thank you for the update. All right. Correspondence and petitions. Anything new that we need to be addressing other than what was on the dais or what was in our packets?
Nothing more than that.
All right. Member Swenson, any aviation noise update for us?
There is a MAC meeting. Hang on, let me get my calendar, because I just got an agenda for it today on the 20th at 1:00, and I think that meeting goes back out to the MAC building. I think they finished their work on it, and so the noise commission will meet on May 20th at 1:00. I am also been invited to speak at the Morningside Community Meeting, which is Wednesday night, the 27th, and I'll be there on Airport Noise with Lauren from Minneapolis, John Quincy's assistant on that. There isn't, you know, they're just starting to do the, what they call STARS, which is the landings going on GPS signals. Someone noticed that planes were actually landing side by side on the two runways recently. I'm thinking that's probably the beginning of STARS because they can lock them in that tightly, that they no longer have to have them alternate, not runways, but alternate space in the sky. They can literally come in next to each other, so.
Manager Neal, anything on that same issue?
I don't.
Okay, good. Member Stewart? Any council comments, council updates?
Sure. Couple of things. I attended the Grandview Open House on Wednesday, April 22nd. I thought that was interesting to see that process go forward. I think we still have a ways to go, but I appreciate all the work that's being done and appreciate all the comments from people in the public who have contacted us and shared with us their perspective on that. Also, on Saturday, the 25th, I attended, at the History Center, they sponsored a little gathering and a speech by Willard Eichler, longtime Edina High School hockey coach. It was just a fascinating time, and I think that I'm just getting to know the History Center. I think they do a really nice job, and I thought that was a great event. Upcoming things. This Sunday, as a public service announcement, I'm going to tell you, it is Mother's Day. Do something nice for your mother. Tuesday, May 12th, there's a law enforcement memorial ceremony at Minneapolis City Hall at 2:00 in the afternoon. So again, is a nod to all the law enforcement officers who help keep our communities safe. It's a nice event coming up. I'm not, actually not sure I can make it. May 14th to 16th, the Concord Neighborhood is having a neighborhood-wide garage sale. On Friday, May 15th, the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office is having open house from 10:00 to 3:00. On Saturday, May 16th, the State Robotics Tournament takes place. The Edina team is just a fantastic group, and they'll be competing down at Williams Arena at the University of Minnesota. And finally, on the evening of Sunday, May 17th, and then on Monday, the 18th, the Edina Education Fund is having their annual golf and tennis event, and I encourage those of you who want to support strong education in Edina to look into that and participate. It's a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
I have a couple of things. On the dais, you have something that I requested be distributed at your place, become a dementia friend. Act on Alzheimer's is a, it's an initiative that is taking place in a number of cities around Minnesota and around the United States, and it's really to help us as community members and community leaders to help our entire community become more aware and more educated about, about helping people with dementia. It is, it affects an enormous number of people, and that number is growing all the time. And there's a video Jordan has. At the training I went to recently, they showed this video, and it's got some good examples of just some simple things.
.............................................................................................................................. Tulips. Sometimes I forget the words for the simplest things. Other days, I struggle to make simple decisions.
Before I became a dementia friend, I thought it was people getting on a bit. But because it's a disease, it can affect anyone, though you are more likely to get it if you're over sixty-five. May I help you across?
Thank you.
Now that I know a little bit about dementia, if I see someone who's hesitating or looks confused, I make sure to ask if I can help.
I meet the girls here every Wednesday for tea, cake, and a natter.
Hello. Hi there. What can I get you?
Looks so delicious. Have a slice of apple tart, please.
There you go, so that's three pounds fifty, please. Well, that's thirty-five pounds. You've given me too much? Look, here's your twenty, and here's your ten, and I'll just give you change for the five, just hang with me. Here's one pound and fifty pence, change for your five.
Thank you.
It's all right. People with dementia may have trouble working out how much to pay, so I'll lend a hand by counting out their money with them.
When I became a dementia friend, I discovered that mirrors and shiny surfaces can look totally different to someone with dementia. Hello there, are you okay? Can I help?
Sorry, yes, I thought I saw someone I knew. I'm looking for my friends.
Okay, well, why don't I take your tray for you? I think your friends might be sitting over there.
Yes, thank you.
Rather than saying, oh, it's just a mirror, I find that the best thing to do is to help that person move away from whatever it is that's causing distress.
Thanks for your help.
Oh, my pleasure.
You don't have to know someone with dementia personally to be a friend. In fact, there are hundreds of thousands of people in the UK becoming dementia friends. By joining them, you'll learn a little bit about the disease and some simple actions that will help people with dementia get on with their everyday lives.
Thanks, Jordan. There was a training session on Wednesday, May first, at Our Lady of Grace, which I went to. And training said there's one a month that's going to be going on. The next one is June twenty-third, the next one is July eighteenth. If you are listening audience out there, and I know you're out there because you have already written me and said I'm interested in this. So the way you find this is you Google "Edina Community Education..." I've got it right here. Where is it? Perfect example. "Edina Community Education: Dementia Friends." And when you Google that, your top item should be the link right to where you can sign up for one of the classes that fits your schedule. They're generally, they're different times a day, actually. Monday, June twenty-third is four o'clock at Normandale Lutheran Church. Saturday, July eighteenth is nine o'clock in the morning at the Edina Senior Center. And classes will continue on a monthly basis. I think ultimately what we can expect from this is that you'll have book clubs, you'll have PEO groups, you'll have Rotary Clubs who are going to have these classes presented to their groups. You'll have organizations in the city like grocery stores, retail, restaurants, training their employees how to help people when they notice someone needs assistance. So it is something that I'm really proud that Edina is doing this. St. Paul is ahead of us. And so what we're doing is kind of watching St. Paul and getting some mentoring from them on this. Another item, I'm on the 494 Corridor Commission, and we had a wonderful thing happen yesterday. We have legislative lobbyists from Messerly and Kramer who are helping us at the state Capitol. And they arranged a meeting with the Governor's Chief of Staff yesterday. And the staff from commuter services, TMO, our Traffic Management Office, were able to meet with the Governor's Chief of Staff and get a nice nod that the Governor would support the funding that is needed for our TMOs around the Twin Cities. So we're extremely happy about that, that that is in conference committee now and will be supported by the Governor in the transportation bill. The Edina Art Fair is coming up, June six, seven, and eight. On Friday and Saturday, ten to seven, the hours are ten to seven. On Sunday, the hours are ten to five. The Edina Crime Prevention Fund will be hosting once again the West Information Booth. And the West Information Booth is located at the entrance to the US Bank parking lot along Fiftieth Street, right by the shuttle stop on the west end of the art fair. So we look forward to seeing you there. And we'll probably have officers when they can stop by. Often they have a motorcycle there and lots of people. It's a photo op with a motorcycle there, so it's pretty cool. And then another committee I'm working on, the Edina Open Streets on Fiftieth. It's our first Open Streets event. Will take place on Sunday, September twenty-seventh, from one to five that day. And we set the date before the Vikings calendar came out. And of course, there's a Vikings game. So we are somehow going to have a big screen there so people can watch the Vikings game at the Open Streets event. An Open Streets event is, this particular one along Fiftieth, is from Beard Avenue in Minneapolis to Browndale in Edina. And we are going to close the street to all traffic except non-motorized. So on your feet and on your bicycle, on your skateboard, on your scooter, you know, your non-motorized scooter. But we're going to have entertainment and lots of things to do to celebrate being out and enjoying our community. Let's see. And that, we'll have entertainment, food, learning centers, and fun activities. So there you have it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Member Swenson.
I noticed in a report from Manhattan County that they are considering having curbside organics, something that we all have to do by potentially 2020. So my question to you, Mr. Neal, is when is it that our current recycling single sort expires? I can't remember what we signed. Was it...
A three-year deal, which might be the end of sixteen, actually.
Okay. So we have some time to try to organize ourselves for that, but I thought we should at least have it on our radar screen and have Energy and Environment looking at it since they're the ones that worked through the last single sort. And then, Jordan, if you could help me out, we started a few weeks ago, a GoFundMe site for this sculpture called Slapshot that used to be on the promenade, the part of the promenade that is actually the promenade. And we've raised eight hundred and sixty dollars towards our goal of twelve thousand so far. We're pretty excited about it because it's the fiftieth year of Bremar this fall. And it started out with the event you went to for Coach Eichler, but they are going to have a historical collection of all the hockey, you know, stuff that they have left from all those thirty-three years of his coaching. He had the third highest winning numbers, I think, of any coach nationally in a high school. But this is for all the kids. So it's about four feet tall and a lot of people on the council have already supported it. Thank you, Bob and Kevin. And so I'm excited. It's a slow, slow add, so anyone that you can text us and tweet it out to, I'd really appreciate it. I figure four hundred families gave twenty-five dollars apiece, and we have thousands of little hockey players out there in our city, that we can get this moved this fall for that fiftieth year celebration. I think that'd be pretty cool. So thank you. That's all I've got.
Yeah, thank you. Member Sutton.
A couple of things. One, I had a chance with Mr. Neal and Councilmember Brindle about a week and a half ago to go have lunch at the Tin Fish.
Yep.
And it hasn't had its grand opening yet, but it's kind of in the midst of a soft opening. It was delicious. So I'm sure there'll be announcements on grand opening.
May nineteenth.
May nineteenth.
Four o'clock.
Okay. So I encourage people to go out, try it out. It's an exciting new kind of era at Bremar and lots more things to come as we move along. The second thing I wanted to share is back on April seventh, the council had a work session, we had a joint meeting with the Energy and Environment Commission. And we talked a little bit about the commitments we've made as a city to steps to global greenhouse gas reductions and climate change issues and ways that we could take that commitment and start to be more concrete and deliberate about making progress towards those goals. And to that end, for better or worse, I volunteered to be a council representative on a group that will tackle that. And so City Manager Neal and I met with Sarah Zarin and Bill Sirkx of the Energy and Environment Commission last Friday. And we have set up our climate commitment team. And I intend during this moment of our council meetings in the future to give you updates as we move along. Manager Neal and I will do that. We're going to meet twice a month at the beginning to try to get our arms around the scope of things that we can possibly do to move the ball forward and then some strategies for how we're going to do that. So look for more reports in the future. I'm excited about trying to put some details to this and meet the commitments that we've made. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Good time. All right. Thank you. Member Brindle just reminded me that on Memorial Day, we will have the dedication of the Veterans' Memorial down at Utley Park. And the Veterans Committee, I stopped in at their meeting a week or so ago on a Friday morning, and they're really well organized. It's going to be a terrific, a terrific program. Denny Schulstedt has done a wonderful job of recruiting folks to appear in costume, I think revolutionary costumes and a wide array of folks that are going to be participating in this dedication event. So thanks for that reminder. I attended the Grandview Open House on the twenty-second of April as well. It was towards the end of the evening, but nonetheless saw folks engaging all of the staff that were there, Mr. Newendorf, folks from Franchu Companies, having some good conversations about some of the possibilities for the Grandview District. And then the next morning, the Fire Department sponsored the Edina Wellness Fair, which was down at Centennial Lakes at the Centrum. There were seventy-five people down there and I just want to commend the Fire Department for doing a wonderful job of organizing and running that event.
Yeah, I was there, too.
Yeah, Member Brindle was there. Thank you for that reminder. On the twenty-fourth, Member Swenson, Manager Neal, and I had a conversation with Urban Land Institute down in Charleston, South Carolina, a woman named Heather Foley, who is helping run something called the Riley Symposium. The mayor of Charleston, Joe Riley, has been the mayor, I think, for forty years and he's retiring. And he's basically been, he's basically been like the town's architect. And, but, you know, this is a tribute to him, but it's also, it was a chance through the ULI organization nationally for them to look for cities that have been doing innovative work. And they've asked us to come down for this celebration in mid-June and be part of the Riley Symposium and present some of the things that we're doing in Edina that are fitting into the appropriate categories of innovation and sustainability, some of the things that we talk about on a regular basis, like our Living Streets Plan. So we're trying to get that squared away so we can go down there on compliments of ULI. So, see, we did highway cleanup on the twenty-fifth of April. I had my, Kevin was out there and I was down below City Hall cleaning up. I think the county must have come through with a cleanup crew because it didn't seem like it had as much trash to pick up as I normally do. And then on the twenty-eighth of April were the passion projects over at the high school, the Edina High School sophomores, over six hundred sophomores in the Performing Arts Center. And over three hundred of them had passion projects that they were presenting on all over the, all over the high school, in the communications center, in the commons area, animal cruelty, sex trafficking, abuse of children, global warming. I mean, there were just a complete array of interest issues that these kids had with their own PowerPoint presentations that they would give you on the spot. It was impressive as to the level of care that they have for what goes on in the world. We're going to be well-served by them coming behind us. On the twenty-ninth, I was with eight mayors, roughly eight mayors, and met with the governor for about an hour and a half at the governor's mansion. One of the topics that came up was the lid on Highway one hundred. And as soon as the session is over, he's eager to come out and meet with us and talk about the lid because he has a keen interest in economic development. So we'll have to invite him out here as our guest and Mendat will come out as well to meet with us and he can get a better handle, a better sense of what this lid idea is all about. And then on the fourth of May, I attended a lunch with the Norwegian Ambassador of the United States. And he's coming back in the fall and wants to come to Edina, so we'll try to arrange that. And then today, we had a special Southwest LRT meeting, the commencement of a conversation about how to find three hundred and forty-one million dollars in cuts on this proposed line in order to frankly save the line, because it's worth saving. It's an important line. We're trying to build out a fifty-two mile system here and about a third of the miles that are in that system are on Southwest LRT. With the job growth in this job-rich corridor and the population growth that we're expected to see, it's important that we make this work. We were trying to make it a perfect project. Now it just needs to be a good project because it's important for our region. So that's what's been going on in my world from a mayor's standpoint. Manager Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor. Two quick items. One is that we have received another request to do a liquor-based event in the Five-O Parking Lot at Fiftieth and France. You may recall, we approved the use of that parking lot for the Edina Art Fair. However, at least at this point, we would tell you that as staff, we would recommend discouraging additional uses of that parking lot for that purpose until we have a sense of how this is going to work. So that's what Ms. Mangan and I plan to do unless you feel highly...
I was just curious who the request was from.
Lifetime Fitness.
Oh.
So it's not a community, it's to support an event that has marketing components.
Is it part of Esprit d'She?
I think that's right.
Okay.
So there's that. And on another token, you may recall that we, I think we struck a pretty good bargain with the developers of the Continental Gardens project last year. We were able to negotiate a conduit financing arrangement with them that produced one hundred and eleven thousand... We were able to negotiate a conduit financing arrangement with them that produced $111,000 in, in cash for us as a, to serve as their conduit. We were able to get a park fee, about a half a million dollar park fee out of that project. But maybe the biggest thing that we were able to negotiate was that they would, we required them to reinvest a million dollars of their windfall from that project into an additional affordable housing project in Edina. And they have closed, we've, we heard from Amer, from Affordable Homes For All, the group that is the owner, developer of that project. They have closed their real estate transaction, so that million dollars is in an escrow account and is targeted for, for that purpose in Edina. So it's, it's not a grant. They're an investor, but that was a requirement of, of their overall deal with us. So...
For three years, right?
For, for three years. If we haven't used it or in, if we haven't made an agreement for its use for that purpose in Edina in three years, they can use it somewhere else in the Twin Cities.
We're very busy.
Whoop, we're gonna get, just found out. So we're gonna get busy right away.
Thank you. That prompt anything else from any of the other council members? Otherwise, we'll adjourn and then go to the HRA. We've got a little bit of work to do there. So council meeting stands adjourned. And calling to order the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. The business of the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority, call to order, please. Roll call.
Commissioner Brindle? Here. Commissioners Thornton?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Swenson?
Here.
Chair Havlin?
Here. We've got a form of meeting agenda. It's embodied in the, at the back end of the regular council agendas. There are motion to approve the form of meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion, second to approve the form of meeting agenda for the HRA. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Approval of minutes of the HRA, April 7, 2015. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. And a motion, second to approve the minutes of April 7, 2015. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. And then we've got a corresponding resolution, 2015-01, which matches up with the council agenda, item 8D, which is the approval of the support for the affordably high-priced housing units over at 66, West 66th Street. The funding that we agreed to provide through the council, we also need to approve through the HRA. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution through the HRA?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion, second to adopt resolution 2015-01, which supports the affordably priced housing at 3330 West 66th Street. Same sort of language as embodied in agenda item 8D. Further discussion, all those in favor of adopting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Any other business for the HRA?
Nope.
If I could just make one addition. Before Ms. Mavady left, she asked me to share some good news with you. They found out earlier today, I believe, that Hennepin County has also committed a pledge to the 66 West Project, also in the range of about half a million dollars. So as of right now, they're 10% on their way to be funded. So that's very good news for them. They also have two grant applications coming up in the next couple of weeks, so hopefully we'll get more good news for that project.
All right.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Newendorf. Anything else for the HRA?
Nope.
HRA is adjourned.